Ladies and gentlemen, they make me do that. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the, it's six o'clock, and welcome to the meeting of the Gastonia City Council at July 1st, 2015. We're glad everyone's here, that is here, and we're also glad to have those that are watching on TV tonight. And so, we're gonna move along. You know, a month ago, I asked for that we go outside and have a rain dance. Maybe we need to do it again, but that wasn't much of one, but we'll take what we can get. At this time, I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Brendan Craig to deliver our prayer, after which we will stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Brendan?
Thank you, Mayor Bridgman. Please pray with me, please. Our heavenly Father, thank you for walking with each of us today. Thank you for the many blessings you continue to bestow upon this council and all of the citizens of Gaston County. I pray that you will guide our hearts and our minds as we conduct matters of business. I pray that you will always be our source of guidance. And, oh Lord, be with the families of the five military men who recently lost their lives serving our country. Please comfort them in their time of sorrow, for this I pray in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America-
-and to the republic for which it stands-
-one nation, under God-
-indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, item C is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Approval of minutes, we'll do them individually, the regular council meeting of May 19th.
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Also, the regular council meeting of June 2nd, 2015, second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? And number three is the regular council meeting of June 16th. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, under awards, ceremonies, and promotions, we have two, and Councilman Gallagher has asked me to present this one. The first one's proclamation recognizing Moss Drug Store on its 75th anniversary. And then, they'll do the second one. Can I ask anyone that's here from the Moss Drug Store, Fred Moss Jr., Kay, and Janet Edwards, Kater Ramsey, to please join me at the podium, if you would, please, anyone that's up there? I'm very honored, Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, to read this proclamation, and when I have one like this, I try, Freddy, to go talk a little faster than Southern. Whereas on June 15th, Moss Drug Store, one of Gastonia's oldest and most recognizable businesses, celebrated its 75th anniversary. And whereas Moss Drug Store was started by Fred Moss Sr., who grew up in Lowell, North Carolina, and worked after school for Dr. Reed, who ran the Cramerton Drug Store. And whereas it was Dr. Reed who provided the resources for Mr. Moss to attend the pharmacy school at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And when Mr. Moss finished pharmacy school, he returned to work for Dr. Reed at the Cramerton Drug Store. And whereas in 1940, after six years of working for Dr. Reed, Fred Moss Sr. bought Firestone Drug Store, formerly Lorrie Drug Store. And in 1961, the drugstore moved to its present location at 701 West Franklin Boulevard and became Moss Drug Store. And whereas in 1962, Mr. Moss's son, Fred Moss Jr., finished pharmacy school and returned to Gastonia to work alongside his father at Moss Drug Store, and was joined in 1969 by one of his fellow students from pharmacy school, Kaden Ramsey. And whereas in 1976, Fred Moss Jr. and Kaden Ramsey sold the store but continued working there, and Fred Moss Sr. continued to stay active in the store and worked until 1980, passing away in 1984. And whereas today, Moss Drug Store is still, today, ladies and gentlemen, independently run and owned and run by Roger Putnam, David Dellinger, and Janet Edwards, and serves people from all walks of life. And whereas the high standard of value and service envisioned by Fred Moss Sr. is still being carried on today, as exemplified in 1914, excuse me, in 2014, and again in 2015, when Moss Drug Store was voted best of Gaston Pharmacy. And in 2014, and again in 2015, Janet Edwards was honored as the best of Gaston Pharmacy. Now therefore, be it to resolve, I, John D. Bridgman, is mayor of the city of Gastonia and the city council of the city of Gastonia, congratulate Moss Drug Store on the occasion of its 75th anniversary, and do hereby recognize the owners and staff for outstanding service and dedication to their customers and our community. In witness whereof, I heretofore set my hand and cause the seal to be affixed, this the 21st day of July in the year of our Lord 2015. John D. Bridgman, mayor, and this attested to by Virginia L. Creighton, city clerk. This is just a small token of thank you, ladies and lady and gentlemen. And certainly, I know that we, there are so many cities that would love to have a thousand of you, and you've done a wonderful job. I remember it as a, I know how old it is, as old as I am, almost, and, but, or vice versa, maybe. But this is certainly a wonderful proclamation, I think, for, to be given to a very deserving group of people, and for what you've done over the years. Freddy, if you'd like to just say any word or come up, I've never known you not to, like me, but if you'd like to come up and say anything at all at this time, and introduce maybe individually, and then, I'd like for everyone on your way down to come by and speak to the council, if you want. All right, sir. This is your proclamation.
Well, I appreciate the proclamation, and it's been a great city to work in, it's been good to me, I appreciate everything the council has done, and all the people out here, citizens of Gastonia, should be proud to be in this city, and that's, that's good.
Thank you very much. If you don't, if you would, please, and you're welcome to stay, as long as you like. Start over on this side, and just as you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Way to go, girl. Way to go.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. How are you?
Oh, yeah, appreciate it.
Oh, we remember them from way back, somewhere. Oh, I do, too. Uh-huh. Oh, yeah, that's exactly right, Cat was right there.
Once again, once again, I'm certain to say thank you to everyone at the Moss Drug Store. The other award that we'd like, very honored, and I promise you just as, just as much, to present as a council, as a group, is a presentation of the citizen awards to Debbie Dills and Todd Frady. Would they come forward to the voting, please? I think that I can tell you, we're more, I can't tell you how fortunate we are to have you here today, and then, we're gonna hear why, if you don't know. Councilman Kimball and Councilman Gallagher.
Just want to read a short blurb about why we're recognizing these citizens here. Tonight, we are honored to have in attendance Ms. Debbie Dills and Todd Frady at our council meeting. On June 18th, 2015, through their heroic efforts, the suspected killer of nine parishioners at the Emanuel AME Church in Charleston was apprehended by law enforcement. On Thursday, June 18th, Ms. Dills was driving from her home in South Gastonia to work and first spotted the suspect, the suspected killer's vehicle on US 74 Sparrow Springs Road in Gastonia. And then shortly after, she called her boss, Mr. Frady. Mr. Frady then called Officer Shane Davis at the Kings Mountain Police Department, who relayed to Shelby Police that the suspect's black Hyundai was traveling west on US 74. Mr. Frady, who had Mrs. Dills and Officers Davis on two separate phones, acted as an intermediary. The initial call to Officer Davis was at 10:35 on Thursday. The Shelby Police Department had officers near Shelby's Angles location on US 74, West Dixon Boulevard, and Polk Road, Polkville Road. Just 20 minutes after Dills' initial call to her boss, the Shelby Police pulled over the killer near Plato Lee Road. She saw the Shelby Police began to follow roof at Angles on US 74 and Polkville Road. Ms. Dills stayed behind, then knowing the situation was well on hand, she made a U-turn at Cleveland Funeral Services, but seemed to still want to see the process all the way through. When she U-turned again, she saw flashing blue lights and a Shelby police officer lining the side of West Dixon Boulevard with roof pulled over and apprehended. We, the city council, and the mayor, and the citizens of Gastonia, would like to express our appreciation for uncommon actions and heroic efforts by unselfishly assisting law enforcement in the apprehension of a mass murderer suspected after killing nine people, it's hard to believe, in a church, Emanuel AME Church in Charleston, South Carolina. And we would like to give two awards out to these two people, and then Officer, I mean, Officer, Councilman Kimball's gonna say a few words. Todd?
Need a little off.
Just wanna say thank you very much, and Debbie? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
On the Sunday following those tragic events at the Emanuel AME Church, felt moved to drive down and to place a floral arrangement at the church on behalf of the mayor, council, and the residents of our fine city. Upon presenting my identification and asked where I could park to deliver, put the floral arrangement up, there's a huge, and I have four photographs, folks, which I'd like to share with you later on, and the council also has them, of the scene down there. It was somewhat reminiscent of New York City after 9/11, where there were so many people walking around, but yet, you could almost hear a pin drop. And you walked about the city, which is normally bustling on a Sunday, some of the finest restaurants, there was a parking space right in front. Tourists were walking about the city, couldn't, they couldn't believe what had transpired there several days before. And I was able to speak with one of the commanders who directed me to where to put the flowers, where to park my vehicle, and he says Gastonia. He says, let me tell you, he actually extended his, his hand, and he gave me a hug, and he said Gastonia. He said, I don't know where we would be in this city without the heroic work of these two folks. He said, I can't imagine what the, what the citizens would feel like if the suspected gunman was still out there and had been unapprehended. And when relating to the story of the heroic efforts of you two folks, could not believe that just being unarmed and doing what you did, and we ended up, it was real hot that day, we ended up sharing a bottle of water together, and something that struck me, you had said in one of the news, news reports, that you were late for work. I think everybody here, and we have a lot of folks in blue here today, would say, I think you were right on time. And I also have a letter from the, the police chief of Charleston, which I'd just like to, to read, it's very brief. It's actually, it was very ironic, we serve on, on the same committee, but we're never there at the same time, so we didn't really know each other. But, so I'd like to thank you for your wonderful support and kind condolences in recent weeks as we mourn the tragic loss of nine beautiful lives. We were all shocked and heartbroken by the horrific act of violence. Without kind, compassion, and caring citizens like you have in Gastonia, it would have been much more difficult for us to suffer through this very difficult period. Please accept my heartfelt thanks for all that your city has done. And it's signed by Greg Mullen, the police chief in Charleston. I don't have really a lot else to say, it was just, I had also brought in a copy of a magazine, a quarterly magazine called The Chief of Police, and it was, it's a publication of the National Association of Chiefs of Police. And a friend of mine from New Jersey had written an article, and obviously, there's two, about a two-month lead time, but the article is Terrorism Concerns Accelerate, and the major thrust of the article, and I have copies for you folks, is protecting America's houses of worship. How timely that was. When I went to the mailbox, I came back with chills, looking at this article and remembering what happened down there. So, I also have photographs of what the scene was like on that Sunday, when every bell at every church at 10 o'clock AM rang for those folks that were killed. So again, I say thank you very much on behalf of our mayor and council in our city, and I don't know how you did it, but it came out real well. Please. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate everything. Thank you. Thank you.
You should take at least some of the time to tell everybody in your business while you're on television.
Frank's forcing you.
Yeah. Speak a little bit. Speak a little bit. Speak a little bit. Okay. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you, Councilmen and Councilmen, Debbie and Todd. Next is item F, is the presentation, Mr. Baye Wright, member of the Gastonia East Rotary Club, referenced 2015 Gastonia Downtown Summer Concert Series. Mr. Wright?
And I have with me Bill Moore, his current president.
Hello, Bill.
Oh, how nice.
Extra large.
If they're not your size, they can exchange as rotary information at the next concert.
That's brilliant. Thank you.
Are they all the same size?
Oh, these are.
Extra, extra. Thank you, sir.
You need an extra large?
We've had great crowds, we've been fellowship at concerts, had great bands, the weather,
Yeah, which one is it?
Probably. I don't think he's going.
Think about born bigger.
very, very hot, threat of rain several times, a lot of people on vacation, and we've had car crews in, and we've had vendors. We've had as many as 40 to 50 cars, and our vendors keep growing each week, we have new ones come in. Don't see Rachel here tonight. We've had weekly meetings, and I know Nancy's here, she can report on anything as far as crowds. I think it was a great move to move things from Maine and south to behind the bay, and hopefully, one day, we'll outgrow that and move back. Bill's got a few words.
We appreciate more than you can know, the support, financial and otherwise, that the council has provided and that the city of Gastonia has presented to its citizens and to allow Rotary to assist in bringing entertainment, wholesome entertainment downtown. We've had a lot of families, we've had a lot of folks who come and realize that just being outside with the crowd, with the music, with the dancing, gives an opportunity to, to relax and to enjoy our fair city in a great location and with a lot of opportunities that we don't often take, because there's a reason to be there, there are other, other people that you may not encounter in the, in the workday. The music's been great, the dancing's been fun, the vendors have grown, so there's now food available, and of course, we're always glad to quench someone's thirst with a rotary-funded beer, so that we can gather some money to bring it back into the community. It's been a, an interesting learning curve for us, in that there are also a lot of, of things about the concert series that we're finding out as we go. For one thing, when it gets real hot, people don't drink as much beer, and that's okay, because what we have gained from this experience, in addition to all of the, the concerts and the great groups, is the opportunity to help develop, and to help develop our community in a way that is positive and entertaining and fun. And so, we don't lament the, that, we want to raise money so that we can put money back into the community, that was the whole point. We could not have done it without this council's support, we could not have done it without the city's support, we could not have done it without the fine folks in blue who have kept us safe, and we've been very fortunate, the crowds we've had have been good crowds, wholesome crowds, enjoying it and not, without incident, I should say, up to this point. We would like to continue that, the art crawl, the merchant booths, the car, the concert cruise in, and the music and dancing have combined, and there's more that we can do. We may be able to open another venue for local groups to give a break to the headline bands, to get people to move from one location to the other, and bring them back through the downtown area, which is one of our goals. We were so fortunate that the downtown merchants jumped to the front and organized and got themselves together. But we've, we've seen our downtown on a Friday night, with families, with food, with beverages, and with dancing, and the fun that goes with that. And quite frankly, we still have three to go, and they're three of the biggest names that we have, which also means three of the highest price tags. So, while the profits may fluctuate, the benefit that we've gained as a community and that this council has bestowed on the citizens continues, and it grows in a lot of other ways than just the funds. But with the Embers, the Tams, and Ken Knox coming up for the next three weeks, we hope that you all will come and enjoy that. We've seen many of you there, most of you, and if you've been there and you've missed us, it's probably because we're working different shifts, but we appreciate the support, both financial and moral support that, that this group has given us, and we believe that it has already proven to be quite a success in a lot of ways. In addition to the, the things that we have done, what Rotary intends to do and will do with the money that we raise, is to feed the senior citizens in the Adult Rec Center, to serve hot chocolate to them every year for the tree lighting ceremony, the scholarships that we award to Gaston College students each year. We've done that for 30 years, this money will allow us to continue and to enhance that, to help build local habitat homes, to help with the Salvation Army bell ringing, to work with Caramont, to sponsor the Community Challenge, and we have the Pavilion also as a, as a great place that you all have presented for us. These things we want to do because we want to put back into the community, we want to make this event something that's ongoing and that allows us to continue. So with that, the numerous other things that we join with the city in trying to promote and develop downtown, the most, I think, the most notable may be that as a result of funds, and we, we have been able to make our donation and will receive matching funds to donate to the robotics program. This year, we got $17,000 to donate to robotics. We plan to continue that, and thank you to this council for allowing us to put these on, put these concerts on, have such fun, have such fellowship, and raise money to put back in the community to do those things. The robotics program has been very successful, and we hope to continue with that, along with other things. With that said, we hope that you will consider that these concerts have also been a success. We want to know if there are things that you've learned, as we have along the way, that we can do better, because there is a lot of room for improvement, and yet, we're, we're declaring it a success, yet with three concerts to go. We hope that you'll consider allowing us to do this and going forward, because with any development and any project, it, it doesn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen at once. So we would like to ask your consideration for moving forward and continuing the concert series for the next three to five years, whatever this council might be willing to do. Rotary's here, we've been here since 1970, we're not going anywhere, and we would love to continue in this partnership to help further develop the downtown and the community sense of our downtown through this project. And we appreciate very much the support you've given us. We ask you to consider supporting us going forward, and to see if that is the council's wish, we want to offer you our volunteer services as Rotary to coordinate, to administer, and to coordinate- So with that, the numerous other things that we join with the city in trying to promote and develop downtown, the most, I think, the most notable may be that as a result of funds, and we have been able to make our donation and will receive matching funds to donate to the robotics program. This year, we got seventeen thousand dollars to donate to robotics. We plan to continue that, and thank you to this council for allowing us to put these concerts on, have such fun, have such fellowship, and raise money to put back in the community to do those things. The robotics program has been very successful, and we hope to continue with that along with other things. With that said, we hope that you will consider that these concerts have also been a success. We want to know if there are things that you've learned, as we have along the way, that we can do better because there is a lot of room for improvement, and yet, we're declaring it a success yet with three concerts to go. We hope that you'll consider allowing us to do this and going forward because with any development and any project, it doesn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen at once. So we would like to ask your consideration for moving forward and continuing the concert series for the next three to five years, whatever this council might be willing to do. Rotary is here. We've been here since nineteen seventy. We're not going anywhere, and we would love to continue in this partnership to help further develop the downtown and the community sense of our downtown through this project, and we appreciate very much the support you've given us. We ask you to consider supporting us going forward, and to see if that is the council's wish, we want to offer you our volunteer services as Rotary to coordinate, to administer, and to continue to raise funds in order to put those things back into the community in those ways that we are able. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions of Barry or Bill? Anyone have? Yes, ma'am.
I have one.
Go right ahead.
This probably to the city manager. In the budget that we've approved, didn't we approve some funding for the downtown concerts?
Yes, we approved the same level of funding that we did for last year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question? Okay. Thank you both very, very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, I just want to say thank you very much for all you've done and how you've... You know, the people have come out. I'm very impressed. I love the crowds. I love the people being down there, and I like your vision, sir, where you want to have local artists and all. That's excellent. And on top of it all, it's just great camaraderie to see many people and just enjoy, and sitting down with your lawn chairs and listening to some good music, and people getting up and dancing. It's nice to see the spirit here in Gastonia, and I just want to say thank you very much for all you've done. Really, excellent job.
Well cooked. Thank you very much. We certainly thank the East Gaston... The Gastonia East Rotary Club for that. Okay, we're going to move along now to the item G is the public expression. Of course, all the rules are here. Each person's limited to a total of five minutes speaking time, and which will... Those are three little lights there on the podium. I'd like to... I have three folks that have signed up. One possibly might want to wait till the... Like we did before, maybe, maybe not. We'll see. The first one is Kason Reynolds regarding the police department. Reynolds, if you'd come forward, please. Now, let me say to you, sir, I apologize that I... Actually, it was a month ago that I did not catch this at that time. You have... The address is two hundred East Long Avenue, which is the police department. I've been public expressing city councils for thirty, forty years. It is the rule that you would give your address, and in this particular case, certainly the city that you live in. Now, if you don't care to do that, then certainly you can, you know, just relinquish that time.
Thank you, sir. Kason Reynolds, two hundred East Long Avenue.
No, sir. No, sir. I said, excuse me, two hundred East Long Avenue is the police department.
Sorry, sir. Gastonia, North Carolina.
You are a resident of Gastonia, North Carolina?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Kason Reynolds, Iron Station.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Over half of the Gastonia Police Department is at starting pay. Mayor, city council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to expand on some of the issues that I brought up when I last addressed the council and to respond to some of the statements that have been made. A month ago, I asked that you address the problem of lack of pay for officers leading to an undermanned department and unsafe city. To date, the department has not been told anything other than a blanket statement that this is being worked on. I have requested information and to be a part of the discussion. However, my requests have gone unanswered. The Gastonia Police Department is in a very dangerous position. We are understaffed and have disbanded units or not filled specialized positions in order to adequately staff patrol. We do not have a street crimes unit. The gray shirts are gone. We have two of five officers in the traffic unit, four of ten in community coordinators. All of this while violent crime is up over twenty-five percent, leading to our proactive enforcement down eighteen percent. The citizens of Gastonia are not being properly served by the police department because of the lack of manpower. This is a dangerous and unsafe environment. So why do we have such a manpower issue? Because of a lack of pay and deceptive tactics. Over half of the department was hired with the premise that the Gastonia Police Department had a step plan. Officers were told that they could come to this department and be at top pay at their ninth year. However, this has never happened. Fifty-two percent of the department is at starting pay for their position, while only seven percent are at top pay. Officers are not being paid what the city promised. This tactic has led to officers leaving by the handfuls every year. Please stop the bleeding and implement the step plan and place officers at the step for their years of service. Keeping senior officers will lead to a safer and more economical city. New officers are more likely to use excess of force and to generate complaints and lawsuits. This ends up costing cities millions of dollars. Having a continuous revolving door of new officers will end up hurting and costing Gastonia more money than the over twenty million that you currently have in reserve in the general fund. Forty percent of our department has less than five years with the city. They come from the best training and experience in the area, are told they'll be paid a competitive salary, but after a few years of no raises and broken promises, they leave to work for other departments or corporations that will actually pay them. Every officer hired since two thousand eight is at starting pay. An officer with over seven years of experience makes the same penny that an officer hired yesterday with no experience makes. Last time I was before the council, you asked officers not to leave. I now ask you to give me a reason to stay here. Hold up to your word and fund the step plan in order to keep your officers. Ninety percent of the department took a recent survey, and eighty-one percent of us say that they are not being paid what we deserve. A third of the department doesn't believe they'll be here in three years. This problem isn't going away, and the largest and best step to retain officers is to immediately implement the step plan and continue to fund it. The number of officers in the crime rate show that the citizens are not safe, and the criminals are not worried about the police being able to stop their violent actions. I came here in two thousand eight. To date, I have lost forty-six thousand dollars because the city has not funded the step plan, and now that amount increases by thirteen thousand dollars a year. This is the reason I am considering leaving. I urge and request the city council implement the step plan and place officers at the step consistent with their years of service. Quit playing games with their lives, be an honest employer, and save this department by implementing the step plan. We cannot become who we need to be by remaining who we are. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, if you could just stay there just a second. I think the procedure is that the mayor has the right to say a word or two, councillor. Is that right?
You have the gavel, Mr. Mayor.
Just a comment. There was a statement made in here, in this very room, some months ago, that I think, and the council thinks, that we've got one of the best manned police departments in North Carolina, and we're very, very proud of them. I think it's very ironic that... And I don't want to be one of those old timers, I-told-you-so's, but I went on the city council in nineteen seventy-one. I've never had anyone openly and publicly say what you just said. I take it very personally. I told my four children, you worry... I've been through recessions and depressions. I know when you can't make a payment. Y'all have your check every... It's not... I wanted to be a police officer. I think they'd make me shave my beard, but I wanted to be a police officer many years ago. I told my children, you think more about your hospital insurance, and you think more about your retirement, and you think more... And then you get into what you expected when you started, and they have, and they did. And I think I would do, you know, certainly... And I'm sure anybody here, we are so proud of our police department, about the number that have gone, the number that are here. It certainly wasn't... I don't know if you're the spokesman of the police department or what you are, but it was never like that in the seventies or the eighties when I was here, even when I was in the legislature. It was not like that at all. I'm just surprised that all of a sudden, it is. And I think that there's... I will ask the city manager at this time, and then we'll move along, and I thank you, sir. We will move along, but I think that there's... Has been, I think it was coming back in August, that it was going to be some situation to do what we can do with the citizens' money. Yeah, you did forget to say at the last meeting that the city is certainly not protected and not taken care of, but you didn't mention that they were taken out of other departments and put in that position, I understand. Now, I don't... I'm not in the police business, but I've always thought... I've always been close, and I have ridden with police officers, and I just think, and I've grieved with them, I've laughed with them, and I know them then more than now. Mr. Monday, you have an update that you would like to give, and we'll move along.
Okay. Yes, I'd be happy to. The staff, particularly the finance department, our human resources department, meeting with police, have taken a look at the market situation, and I think we agree that there is a need to do a market adjustment for police officers. What's happened in our police department also, to some extent, is occurring in the fire department and public works and with the rest of the workforce, but it's particularly evident with the police department. There needs to be some changes to be able to bring our salaries closer to the changes in the marketplace for police officers. What we're looking at is what can be fiscally sustainable. In other words, what can you pay for? How can we move forward? In this past year, we did have an increase, an average increase of about three and a half percent. That's a step forward, and what we'll do is we'll bring to the council, and well before the council, let the council look at the information that we've been able to put together, and we'll share with you some recommendations, and also share with the workforce our recommendations, and solicit input, and look at the best way to deal with what we think are really kind of the four issues here. One is making sure that our pay is as close to market as we can possibly be. Second, that it's fiscally sustainable, not just for one year, but two, three, four, five years, that you can... What we say, we can actually deliver. That it's internally fair, that you don't just pay a couple of people, but you don't get the other folks. Then you don't fix one problem and then create another one. So those are the, you know, the elements that are important, we think, in a pay plan. So we'll bring some of that forward. We think we'll be able to make some progress in the discussion in August, and certainly want to make sure that all the police are involved. It's all going to be public information, and we'll work together with the police department, but also with the finance department because we have to pay for it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it'll be an item on the agenda on the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth of August.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Yes, would you like to...
With your permission...
Yes.
Because I know we don't have discussion at...
Yeah.
Is it on?
It's me.
During public expression. But with your permission, could I just ask one question?
Of?
Of the city manager or somebody in the police department?
Certainly, go ahead.
Has... You know, I hear about the step plan, and all your presentation dealt with the step plan, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So I guess I'm sitting here wondering, has there been any other plans that the police department have worked on or the city as far as a plan presented to the city by the police department or their senior management that would indicate what maybe they would be willing to look at? I don't know.
Be happy to address that. One of the things that we... What we want to do is show the council what it would take to implement the step plan, also what it would take if you would want to go back and fund some years that weren't funded for just the police department, for the fire department, for the workforce at large, broken down. So you can take a look at that, and that plan that was developed and was in practice for about three years will provide you that information about what that really means financially. But yes, there are other plans that we're looking at, particularly to take a look at what we can do in the short term to try to help our police officers and try to take a look at developing a career path. One of the things that's being discussed here, that a police officer that's been here seven years gets paid as much as a new police officer, that's not right. We want to make that career path so that as you get more experience and training, you're also able to get more income, and that's reasonable and move forward. And so, we have looked at lots of different ideas, but primarily, they revolve around a couple. One is creating a career path that takes into account things like an intermediate and advanced certificates that should be compensated for more than we do currently. And also taking a look at providing monetary payments for your years of experience with the police department and the training that you're able to get so that it's not only a recruitment issue, but it's retention as well. So they all have price tags to it, and they all have difficulty with implementation. There are a hundred and seventy-one people involved, and so that it is complicated. Most of them police officers, but it does affect sergeants and captains in making sure that everybody's pays are fairly done. So that's the work, and what we'll do is bring something... Bring things forward. It's not going to be like it's got to be this or that, but we'll give the council some options and show the council what the step plan is and what it costs and what some of these others would be.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
May I respond to one thing, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mann, I will gladly volunteer my time anytime that you want to have a discussion or be on a committee about this. I'm still waiting to hear from you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to talk to Mr. Reynolds tomorrow, the next day.
All right. Okay. Next one on the list is Mr. Marassa. You want to speak now or you want to have it with item ten? It's coming up. All right. The third one is Mr. Russell Adams, fifteen fifty-eight Pine Creek. Right. Mr. Adams.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm here to ask a question about Parks and Rec. I've lived in this city all my life, and I'm here tonight to ask the council if you would look into funding the projects that are currently ongoing in Parks and Rec. I have been in constant communication with Mr. Dellinger and Ms. Pat Corrent from September of nineteen... I'm sorry, from September of two thousand nine until the present day. There are issues concerning the tennis court, volley wall, and sidewalks. The tennis courts are currently being repaired. Again, I say this has been ongoing for six years, and what I'm asking is that the projects be completed either this year or early springs. So I'm asking you guys to look into that for me. Thank you so much.
Would you want... What? Sorry. Mr. Hope, just a minute.
Which park are you referring to, Mr. Adams?
Primarily Phillips Center.
Phillips Center, okay.
Right. For thirty-plus years, there's been a volley wall there and tennis courts. In oh-nine, I talked with Ms. Corrent, and they gave me the impression that at least the volley wall was going to be completed, which is a small matter. And every time I talk with them, I'm sort of like getting put off. The last conversation I had with Mr. Dellinger concerning the projects, he said that there may not be enough money to even do the volley wall. Well, these courts at Phillips Center and Ferguson have been there thirty-plus years. They don't even have sidewalks, okay? The volley wall, simple matter. I really didn't feel like, being a citizen, I should be deprived of those amenities. Again, I've used them for thirty-five years, maybe a small matter, but still, you know, I'm like the gentleman said, I've lived here all my life, and I'm proud to be a Gastonian. And before I leave, I'm just here... And before I leave, I'm, I'm, I'm just here, just trying to find out information, just trying to see what can be done to expedite the projects. Thanks.
Mr. Mundy, you have any, any update on that? I don't see Mr. Dellinger here.
What we'll do is get together with Mr. Dellinger. I think we were suggesting a conversation with the Recreation Advisory Committee to some degree, but the, the volley wall he's talking about is that old green wall that, I remember I used to hit tennis balls against. It's a wooden, it, it isn't that costly, but there, there is, I don't know that it's in the budget this year. What we do have for Phillips in this year is a new floor internal to the center, and we're also building, reconstructing the tennis courts.
That's correct.
So those, those projects are moving forward, but I'll have to get with Mr. Dellinger about the specifics of what you're talking about.
Well, I, I appreciate it, appreciate that, Mr. Mundy, but like you said, the volley wall is a small matter. I felt like it could have been completed the first year I asked, and it just keep getting pushed back. So that's why I'm here. Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
A question for, thank you, sir, for Mr. Mundy. Ed, if I understand correctly, sir, you're indicating that this has been on the drawing board or on the, in the, in the hopper since 2009. Where are we? Are we making progress with that since 2009, or where are we going with that?
The Recreation Department and Recreation Advisory Committee have a list of projects that they work on, and they kind of do the, the most, they, they put them in a priority, what comes first and what comes second. For instance, and then sometimes when we actually have a failure, something that might have been further down the list jumps up to the top. If you remember, one of the things we did just last year was we did the Asher Tennis Courts, because we actually had an opportunity in that case where the county was going to pay half of it, so we advanced that particular project. The Phillips project is, is this year, as well as the, the floor. But the volley wall, I don't think it's a lot of money, but I don't know that we've had a really good discussion at the staff level on it recently, and I don't know if Councilman Curlin, if, if Recreation Advisory Committee's discussed it much.
We haven't had any specific discussions about it. This is the first I've really heard of it, so...
Yeah.
But certainly with Mr. Dellinger, we'll look at it and, you know, try and address this as soon as possible.
Yeah, there are, there are many, many things that we could do, and Sims Legion Park's another example. Each year, we try to make an improvement at Sims, so we'll try, we're doing $75,000 there, but you really could spend a million dollars there if you want to. So each of our parks, what we try to do is find where the, where there really is a need, and then try to fund those most serious projects. And we also give the Recreation Department and Mr. Dellinger flexibility during the year, that again, if something comes up, that they can move those dollars around to go with the greatest need.
Well, it sounds like you had a lot to do messing up that wall.
I...
Maybe you could help us out on that.
Probably, yeah, I know, I kept hitting it over the wall.
Oh, over the wall, okay.
Mayor, I was just going to say, I understand the budgetary constraints and stuff, but the fact that the Recreation Advisory Committee hasn't even heard, if we don't have the money to do it, that's fine, but we shouldn't be telling the citizen for six years, we're getting around to it, we're getting around to it. We need to improve that communication. If we don't have the money, they need to be told we don't have the money this year. If you'll bring it to our attention next year, we'll review it. I mean, to string somebody along for six years saying we're going to do a, a volley wall, it's just not acceptable. So we can improve that.
Since this is in Ward 6, in my ward?
Uh, yes, Ms. Chris.
Uh-huh.
I called you, but you didn't return my call. The only person that returned my call was Mr. McIntyre.
Okay.
And he called me on that occasion. And I'm, I'm just here, just, just trying to set up a dialogue. I don't know procedures. And let me say one thing about Parks and Rec. Mr. Dellinger is a fine gentleman. All the work that he's done, I mean, I really appreciate it. Rankin Lake is beautiful. Leinburger Park, but I thought this was a small matter.
It seems like it.
And, but for six years, I, I mean, I, so that's why I'm here. I didn't feel like my voice was being heard, so I'm here.
Thank you very much, sir, and your voice is being heard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
In, in closing, thank you again, sir. Do we have an idea, Ed, when we could respond back to this gentleman with, once we, you conduct the fact finding with the Recreation Department, and if the necessary, the Recreation Advisory Committee?
I, I think we'll be able to do that next week.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving along, the consent agenda, everyone's had a chance to look at and read, is items one through eight of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a discussion? All in favor? Please, hand. Thank you. Consent agenda has been approved. Next, under the regular agenda, uh... He's busy right now, but I'll go ahead and read. I see him there. Water treatment, plant renovation project approval of construction manager at risk contract with Rogers Crowder in Phase 1 guaranteed maximum price, clear well, project construction in the amount of $5,254,775. Presentations, Mr. Matt Bernhardt, Director of Public Works and Utilities. You, I can, we can wait on you or skip. I, I saw you were busy, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bernhardt is an expert on volley walls. He is a tennis pla, he is a tennis player, and probably has, the wall always wins, though.
No, the wall wins.
No matter how hard you hit.
Okay. Gotcha.
I will tell you that in playing tennis, my nickname is the wall. And I was never totally sure if it was because of the width.
Yeah.
You know, or because of the reflection, but anyway. Also, being, in, being with Public Works and Utilities, and being over building maintenance, I have a suspicion that if any construction regarding a wall is involved, that Parks and Recreation is going to look to building maintenance. So I wanted to be sure I had Mr. Adams' number, and if it please, the, the manager and the council will be in touch with Mr. Dellinger and see what we can work out.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I would also gather that while I was doing that, that you got around to the water plant project.
Well, we were memorizing what the, the data we've received so far, which is about 6,000 pages.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that I...
Tell me how to do that.
I just wanted to be sure that I was on the right subject when I got up here.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Yes, sir. We called it, but we knew you were busy too, Mr. Adams.
All right. Well, I'm pleased to bring to you the, the news that after a whole lot of planning and effort, and almost five years since its very beginnings in the study, your water plant renovation project is moving from the planning and design phases into construction. As you know, we have selected our architects and engineers, Labella Associates, Mr. Keith Garbrick, Vice President, is here tonight, and we've selected our construction manager at risk, a joint venture of two of the premier construction companies in the Carolinas, Rogers Crowder Construction. And we are utilizing the construction manager at risk method for the, for the construction of the project. I'm here tonight regarding the first phase of the project, which would be the construction of a new 4-million-gallon clear well on the property adjacent to the plant, where we had a, a very good groundbreaking recently. I want to thank you for your support and participation in that as well. We've developed and completed the plans for the construction of that clear well. Those plans have been submitted to the state for review. We received approval on those. Rogers Crowder's entertained bids for the construction of the clear well during the month of June, and we have now received a GMP, or a guaranteed maximum price, from them, based upon the bids received. And that total is at $5,254,775. We have an attached contract for your consideration that has been reviewed and approved by city legal staff and the utility staff, and I can tell you many hours have been spent on it in discussion and negotiation with Rogers Crowder's, by myself, by Mr. Garbrick, by city legal staff, and our retained legal staff as well. So much time has been invested. I also want to, so we'll be, we're bringing that contract to you and recommending it for approval, subject to any minor adjustments or changes that would need to be made in the completion of it for execution by both parties. The funding for the first phase is available through the budget, and a, primarily through a $5-million-zero-percent-interest loan from NC Deener, from the, it's federal funding through the state. And we've already done the necessary budget amendments and work to allocate the funding to the proper accounts to be able to undertake that contract and move into the construction phase. I'd just add, for purposes of information, that a second phase, when the second phase gets underway, as we complete the design of that, gain approval of those plans, and get the bids for those, an amendment to this contract will be brought back to you for your consideration at that time for the remainder of the project. So this is for that 5.2 million first phase. And as a related item on the consent agenda, there was the setting of the public hearing for the closure of the necessary streets around the water plant for the project, and going forward into the future, and I'm sure you've reviewed that as well. I guess basically then, the staff recommendation is for approval of the attached items related to the water treatment plant project, with approval of the C Mar contract documents with Rogers Crowder's and the Phase 1 GMP clear well project construction in the amount of $5,254,775.
Okay, sure. Discussion. Yes, sir. And then take that.
Question, question, Matt. The 4-million-gallon clear well, it's going to start soon, the construction?
Yes, sir.
When, what's the ETA on completion?
It will finish next year, so its construction will be through the summer, the fall, and the winter and spring, and finish up in the late spring to early summer. It, for a 4-million-gallon tank, it actually will be mostly excavated and within the ground, so what you'll really see is the cap of the tank and just a portion of it sticking out of the ground.
I would like to make a motion that we approve it as per staff's recommendation.
Sir. Any other discussion, question?
I'd like to connect.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Thank you for the great groundbreaking.
Yes, sir.
Very successful, Christie and all of them, and particularly the staff, Matt Bernhardt and all his staff have done so much work on this project, Ed Mundy and our engineering staff, thank you very much for all that you've done. This is going to be great when you, down the road a few years from now, when you finish this project, Gastonia and all the surrounding communities that use our water are going to appreciate that. The one thing you've got to have is water.
Yes, sir.
It's very important, and it's probably the most important thing we do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? All, we're going to vote, all in favor? Okay, vote. Thank you, sir. All right, item 10, Web Theater Redevelopment Agreement, Rehab Craft LLC. Actually, the presentation's Mr. Smith, you want to...
Hold on just a minute, Mr. Morasso.
He's eager to get up there.
Very quickly.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Pursuant to council's previous instructions, the property at 182 South South Street, the Web Theater, was declared surplus. It was advertised for an upset bid with a redevelopment agreement on June 20th. The upset bid period ran without any upset bids being received. Your original motion, I believe it was Councilman Pierceall's motion, said that this would come back to you in the, in the event there were any upset bids, so that you could decide whether they were responsive or not. So it is before you tonight for approval. If it is approved, Rehab Craft has 45 days to close on the property from today, and then they have six months to do the $300,000 worth of improvements. Finance Director Brady is here, and Christie Crisp is here, and the two of them, and the manager and I, reviewed some financial materials that were supplied by Mr. Morasso as to his ability to do the project, and then retained by Mr. Morasso to get a feel on, you know, the, you know, the financial capitalization of Rehab Craft to carry through on the project. And I would refer those questions to Ms. Brady or the manager. If there are any questions about the documents or timelines, I'd be glad to answer those.
Questions, Mr., to Mr. Smith? Yes, sir. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Curlin.
Okay, I would like, first of all, Ash, thank you for your diligent work in this. I know there's been just a, a lot of paperwork going around. I would just like clarification between the article that was before us before and a recent Gaston Gazette article, which indicates apparently, and I would, you know, I, I believe we've looked into this, hopefully we have, that Mr. Mack is no longer a partner in that particular company, and I guess prior, at what point was, and maybe you could enlighten us on this, who, when did this person bail out?
Well, Mr. Mack was never part of Rehab Craft LLC, according to the documents on file at the Secretary of State. He is still a partner with Mr. Morasso in Epic and will continue to be a partner in Epic, and I'll let Mr. Morasso answer any more questions.
Well, hold on, Counselor. It says, "At your May 5 meeting, the City Council voted to move forward with negotiating an agreement with Jim Morasso and Richard Mack, who have now set up a limited liability company."
Well, Rehab Craft is owned solely by Mr. Morasso, according to the documents at the Secretary of State's office.
Okay, well, this is what we had before us on, on June 9th, number one. So can, can you enlighten us, sir? Because this is the document that we voted on, I believe. I have it right here.
Sir. Councilman Campbell, can you phrase a question that you'd like me to answer?
Sure. Before us, we, I have in my possession, it's a memorandum from, to the mayor and council from our city attorney on Enray Web Theater Development dated June 9, 2015. At your May 5, 2015, meeting, the City Council voted to move forward with negotiating an agreement with Jim Morasso and Richard Mack, in parenthesis, who have now set up a limited liability company, Rehab Craft LLC, for the purposes of their planned restaurant venture here in Gastonia. We have this document, and I would like clarification. There was a Gaston Gazette article which indicated that, I don't believe, Mr., if this is accurate, Mr. Mack is involved anymore?
Mr. Mack and I are friends, we're partners at Gast, with the Epic Chop House in Mooresville, and we went up to Friday before responding to the city on Tuesday. Mr. Mack had a question about his involvement and his percentage, and became quite set as, this is what I want, Jim, in this, not so much in the building end of it, but for the restaurant end of it, and it exceeded a, a fair and balanced partnership in the restaurant entity. Mr. Mack wanted everything to be exactly equal, although he was not going to be a managing member of the LLC, and he was not going to be involved in the day-to-day operations. In all of my restaurants, I am the business leader, I am the, the person who runs the businesses. Mr. Mack is acting as an architect, which he does a very good job at, but also as a potential backer for the restaurants. My goal is always to operate my own businesses, and Mr. Mack wanted an equal part of that, even though he was not an operator, a managing member of the, of the LLC part of the restaurant then. So he said, "That's what I would like, take it or leave it." And I said, "Thank you for," in a very kind email, "Sometimes things just don't work out. You don't see eye to eye on things, but if that was the answer, is take it or leave it, I'm going to pursue something else," which I did within 48 hours, found a, a partner to back that other end of it. And he is Bruce Schreick, who is my brother-in-law, who is the president, principal... who is the president, principal, and also CEO of GAWald Hamilton, which is a civil engineering company up in, up in Illinois. As far as the concern about Mr. Mack's architectural skills, I've obtained David Wagner, who is the original architect for the Web Theater process, who knows the, the project in and out, and he will be meeting with, he was supposed to meet with me tomorrow, but he has an appointment maybe Friday or Monday of the, excuse me, Tuesday of, of the following week, to get the process rolling.
He, thank you, sir, for, for clearing that up from the, the June 9 documents. So the, the, your brother-in-law, who's the new partner, is, he's, he resides in Illinois?
He does.
Okay. And Mr., the, the new architect, did he work with Mr. Levecchia on the initial development of that project, sir?
He did, but he's also, he's got some great restaurant skills. He did most of Harper's Groups, Mimosa Grill, M5, quite a few other concepts, too. His, his flair and his style is, well, it's evident in the building across the street. But the other advantage of me working with Mr. Wagner is he knows how things lay. He knows where everything is hidden. He actually had a larger scale view of the project previously that he was dying to help create, too. So I think I found a great architect who knows the, the, the process of things in the web theater.
Okay, last question, if you could.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I guess, like, where I still have a little bit of a feeling of disconnect is that if we're indicating that Doc, Ms., David Wagner is going to be the architect for this new venture, he was the architect for the previous venture, and there are a number of statements which indicate that the previous venture really didn't measure up. So I guess the question is, why are we using him again? Just a question.
Okay, he was, he was the architect, it was the previous owner's option to follow through and, and do the list of things that needed to get done, and I'm only speaking from what I've heard. He chose not to do those things, to cut back on this and cut back on that, and like anything, you can design a perfect airplane, but if you say, "I don't want to, you know, I don't want tires on it, and I don't want the seats in it," you don't end up with what you're supposed to get.
You don't use enough bolts.
Yeah, you need a couple of those things to keep that stuff together.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Dr. Kirk, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is just, I guess, a homework question for our city attorney. Just in Exhibit B, would you review Exhibit B and see if this needs to be modified, if we're going to approve this?
One more question.
Because there's a, there's, there's Mr. Mack's name on there. Could, can we, do we need to clean that up somehow?
We will strike that.
Is, is that the only thing?
And RDM Group.
Okay. Do we need to... Strike that?
Yeah.
Okay. We just want to have this motion be...
That was the redevelopment proposal that was submitted when the bid came before council, so...
Right, I mean, I just, you know, because the Exhibit B is alluded to in the contract, and we want Exhibit B to be accurate. So, okay.
Now, am I correct, Ash, that you have, the city has in their possession, the data and the, the financial data?
We did not, we did not keep it. It was shared with us by Mr. Marasso, is represented today. We met yesterday and reviewed it, and they retained possession of.
But the, 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 the new partner?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We saw his tax returns, Mr. Marasso's tax returns, tax returns for Chillfire for two years and for Epic for four years.
Okay.
Okay, yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the contract with Mr. Marasso for the...
Is there a second?
Redevelopment of the web theater with the amendments.
Second with the...
With the amendments, I give you...
Amendment.
With me a chance, I'm trying to speak slowly and accurately, okay, with the amendments by striking from X, Exhibit B, Jim Marasso's name now, Rick Mack's name, as well as the RDM Group, is that correct? And is this address also the same that's listed here, the PO Box 1029, is that an accurate address?
No, I will, I will supply a new. 1029, what is the address on 1029?
It's PO Box 1029, 215 South Main Street, Suite 303 Davidson, North Carolina, 28037.
That is not. I will get, I will get a current address sent to, to Ash.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Is Exhibit B necessary for the contract?
That first page is just kind of the title page, and then you have your conditions here on Exhibit 1012, so yes, we do want that included in the contract.
The, the title page, okay.
I mean, the title page isn't really important, that there's a mistake on it, but the motion corrects those things. But we do want Exhibit B, which includes Exhibit Page 1012, because those are a list of conditions that you want to make sure are incorporated into what's done to the building.
Right.
But, Ash, when, when is the further, for the opening, within six months after closing? That just jumps out at me. But what is projected to be the closing date?
Forty-five days from today, so as soon as Ms. Pascal contacts me and says she's ready to close, the city will be ready to close. We provided our title file to Ms. Pascal's paralegal, so, you know, when they tell us they're ready, they'll be ready.
Great.
Forty-five days.
Discussion, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please. Opposed? All right, one opposed, and it passed. Now, Izzy, we sort of brought you up and used you a little, but you had signed up. Is there anything that you want to add, Jim?
I just want to be open for any questions that the council may have. I realize this was a little bit of a different dart than we originally had, and I want to assure you that I will, I will make you all proud for your decision. I'll be so excited to open up this restaurant, this business. I'm going to be working diligently to get it open before the end of this year.
Well, I would only guess that, that based on your candidness and telling, telling it like it was, that, that probably among some of us here is about one of 50 times we've heard that. I mean, it's, there ain't too many marriages there. I mean, you know, if it's not, if you don't agree, isn't it great that you agreed not to agree upfront at the beginning? So certainly your investor being, from wherever he's from, he's an investor. He's not going to run the operations.
He's a, he's a lovely man. I've got to tell you, he is, he is a salt of the earth. His word is his bond, and I've shaken hands with him more times and finished the deals. He's just an incredible man. I've had, I have to say that of him.
All right, sir. Well, thank you very much, sir.
Any other questions?
Let's eat.
Yes, yes, very soon.
Very soon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We voted and approved that. The, item 11 is the, Mr. Smith again, the Gastonia Conference Center Management Agreement, since we're downtown. Culinary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item 11.
Again, the council has engaged in a very long process with regard to management of the conference center. Request for proposals went out. A series of firms were reviewed. I believe two were, two were interviewed. This is a qualified management contract under IRS regulations, which will preserve the interest status of the bonds that we issued to build the conference center. So that, part of that is that the city's responsible for the operating losses of the conference center. As you know, the terms, some of the terms of the agreement are mentioned in the memo. The annual fee that will be paid to Culinary, the amount that will be deposited into operating account. I was asked this week to add a clause to Section 1.1 about business that is already booked by the existing management company and how Culinary will cooperate with them, and that is why you have a revised copy. It's, basically starts on page one and goes to page two with regard to that language. Finally, one little piece of due diligence today, Culinary International Incorporated, a Texas corporation, is not licensed to do business in North Carolina, but they have a subsidiary called Culinary of Florida Incorporated that does have a certificate of authority to do business in North Carolina. It is still a Texas corporation. So any motion we'll need, if it is to approve, will need to amend the contract to be Culinary of Florida Incorporated. It's still a Texas corporation, but it is the one that has a certificate of authority to do business in North Carolina.
Is that how they set up the one in Charlotte?
I do not know, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe, you know, that's, they're just running the catering there. They just have a catering contract, and I've not seen that agreement.
All right. I mean, not that it matters, I'm just curious if it, but so...
Questions.
That's not unusual. Questions? Yes, ma'am. Then, yes, sir.
Ash, this that's at our desk, okay, this is the copy that we're approving, not what's in here.
Yes, but we, we still need to amend this to say Culinary of Florida Incorporated.
Right, okay, but this, this is, really becomes the legal document, not the one that's in our...
Correct.
...kind of pack of funds, thank you.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Pierceall, out here, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Ash, what is the, I don't know the best way to say this, but obviously we're responsible for the loss, operating loss, but is there a stop at some point, an amount, or, I mean, is this contract, I mean, they can only lose $2 million next year, we just have to pay it, that's it?
We will have a budget, and if they start getting out of line with the budget, then we will have to activate, you know, measures that we deem them to be in breach and replace them and bring in someone else to stop the hemorrhaging. That is the only answer that I have to that, unless the manager wants to add to that.
The simple answer is if it starts getting out of hand, what, what triggers it being out of hand?
The budget.
Unless there were some other, because our, our contract, if there's a breach in the, another manager might do it, but if you're talking about, you know, financially, you would be, but once, once we look at that, then we lose the procedure in the contract to go forward with, in that breach situation.
Okay.
We're supposed to go to mediation first, then after that, we, we then ultimately then sever the relationship.
Okay. Yes, sure, Reed.
Ash.
That's right, you're next.
When are they expecting to take over?
September 1st.
That's a good question.
And Mr. Michael Nolan is here tonight from Culinary, if I got the name right.
Yes, sir.
Two rest, go ahead, yes, please. Me? No, Mr. Campbell and Dr. Kirk, because he had already, go ahead.
Ash, I wanted, I just wanted your opinion on, on, actually, one, one item. There was a concern, it was brought up right around the June 2 meeting regarding a Justice Department action against Culinary, which was related to some employment practices, and that was subsequently settled. And a concern that I had in reviewing that document and the statements that were made, and you did a great job on, on getting to the bottom of that DOJ thing, but in Tab A from the, the presentation that Culinary did for us, and I, I think it may, it may speak to a little question of transparency. It says on page one of the documents that were presented to us, "There is no unusual condition, comma, including significant written complaints from customers, staff changes, legal action, or any other information that will affect Culinary's International's financial condition. None is anticipated." And I, I just wonder if maybe we should have been told about the agreement that was entered into with the Justice Department, and I believe also they had to additionally put up some extra money in case there were more claims, and they're still, I believe, under a consent decree for a little while yet. It gets like 20, it was 20 months. So I just, what are your thoughts as far as transparency with regard to this statement that was made and presented to us?
Well, they are under continuing reporting requirement to the DOJ until July of 2016, I believe, and they did have to set up a fund of $40,000 for any back pay claims with regard to the people who had perhaps been discriminated against. The deadline, though, to file for any of that compensation was April of this year, and it expired without anybody filing a claim for any money, so no money was paid out of the $40,000. I can't speak to whether there was any intent on not being transparent on Culinary's part. They're a large company, and, you know, what was going on there is, these were not illegal immigrants that were working at Culinary. These were immigrants, legal immigrants with green cards, and Culinary knew that they were expiring, so they said, "Can you come show us your green, your new green card so that we know that you're authorized to work?" And I think there was a change at the DOJ, or there was a change in a rule such that in a prior administration, that would have been an acceptable business practice, and it's not an acceptable business practice now with the current change in the rules. And so they got into a little bit of trouble with the DOJ, but they resolved it, and Ms. Zan at the Justice Department spoke very complimentary of them, which is a bit unusual for the prosecuting attorney in that instance.
So just to regress to my question, do you think that in this particular paragraph that, that maybe should have been disclosed as far as complaints and legal action?
You know, Councilman Campbell, I don't know if they considered it to have been dismissed and resolved because they had a, you know, they had a consent decree and didn't consider it to be a legal action.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right.
Yeah, I just hate to see someone like Mr. Nolan make such effort to come here tonight and not have a chance to get up and introduce himself, say hello to the public at large, as well as reacquaint himself with our city council, since I imagine we'll be seeing some more of him, but we, we're just, you know, looking for exciting, good words from you, sir, about what is yet to come, you know, we're starting to salivate. So tell us, tell, tell us some of your passion and where you will fit into this picture.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bridgman, Council for having us. I'm here representing Culinary. I have worked with them for one year in Charlotte. I've been doing food and beverage for the last 20 years. This is a smaller property that I'm at now in Charlotte than what I'm used to working at before. I've worked with Marriott in Nashville, Tennessee, Lexington, Kentucky, and now I'm in Charlotte. I have three young children. My wife is a school teacher, so I'm very nervous. But anyhow, my passion for this business is long hours, making the customer happy, giving them exactly what they ordered, and following through with that. Repeat business.
So will you be the onsite manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Excited for September 1st.
Okay, great.
That's one, yes.
I just have one question of Ash. Has Culinary signed, agreed to this contract, or we do it first and then we send it to them?
Well, they have agreed to it, so we can have them sign their three copies first and send them to us this week.
Okay, okay, but they have, they have already agreed to everything that's in this?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the final, except for, the motion needs to say Culinary of Florida Incorporated.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mack, do you?
I was going to kind of brag on Fred Julius a little bit before we vote on this. I think that he's a good guy.
He is a good guy.
He's done a real good job. They've got, started with $156,000 on the books, now they have over $300,000 on it, and they're in line the next few years to have their losses down to $64,000. But I would, I'm going to vote just like I did before, because I think that we're making a mistake by letting Stata Platinum go. I think they were doing a good job, and I think they would have continued to grow and, and improve themselves, and of course, you know they're going to roadie and take over, and I think they're open August the 4th, so if you want to get a good meal, go down, I plan to go down there and eat on August the 4th at dinner. But I want to say thank you publicly to Fred Julius and his staff, Stata Platinum, and what they've done. And when they came in, when we were in a real bind, and I remember, we talked about this, and really were fortunate to have Fred Julius and his group to come in and take over the conference center. I think they did a great job. They started off in the hole, and they built it up to a real good business, and, and I respect how everybody votes on this, but I'm real disappointed that we're not letting them continue to do that. But, you know, four to three votes are four to three votes. So, but I just want to thank Fred Julius publicly for what he's done for our community, to say.
Pierceall.
Speaking of votes, I was going to make a motion that we approve the contract with Culinary with the change to Culinary... Cullinair with the change to Cullinair of Florida we added to that contract.
I second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, opposed? It's two, okay, and it does pass, thank you. Yes, sir, go right, Mr. Nolan.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I just wanted to say, have you had a chance to get acquainted with the downtown merchants here in Gastonia yet?
Not yet. Our prep originally was gonna be for an October 1st takeover, in which case, 60 days out, we would have started our due diligence, getting to know everybody. We tried to get into the dinner that they had for the basketball coach, but the event was already sold out, but basically, probably starting tomorrow, once, since this is now passed, we're gonna get in gear, start talking to associates that are in the building now, interviewing them, and then just, you know, take over the transition period.
No, I was actually talking, referring to the Downtown Merchants Association.
Oh.
Where we have a group, you know, the people that run businesses down here, just so you guys can be acquainted.
I have not yet, but I will make a note, and we will certainly.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I have one more, since you did mention you'd start interviewing the associates tomorrow, or whenever you do.
Correct.
We've got some good staff down there, our Stellar Platinum has good staff down there, and I hope you will give your utmost consideration to some of those local employees that live here.
Certainly.
And know me people that are around here.
Yes. Being in the conference center business, I've been in probably three or four transition periods, and the, when ultimately new companies came in, honestly, the, you know, just the top people would leave, but, you know, pretty much the core, your nuts and bolts, you know, they pretty much stay, they know the area, so.
Thank you.
I guess it's safe to assume, sir, with three young children, that you'll spend a lot of time at the conference center.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Lots of it.
I understand. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you, look forward to it.
Looking forward to working with you.
Great, thank you, council.
Okay. Item number, item 12 is an ordinance amending chapter 16 of the City Code of the City of Gastonia to amend 1667, an additional requirements for issuance of the permit to set the insurance requirements for obtaining a permit to move a house within a national register historic district. Mr. Munn?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an amendment to section 16-67, which actually will reduce the insurance requirements for moves within a historic district. This is a very narrow amendment, it allows for essentially Preservation North Carolina or a similar kind of organization that wants to move a historic structure from one lot to another within the same district. This is a, in some cases, it would actually be moving it to the next lot, so they're not, the moves themselves are not long and extensive. If you go back to the history of why our ordinance is written the way it is, it's many pages long, and it actually has the, this $3 million requirement and a number of other requirements, because frankly, we were having problems with house movers, they were going through the city, there were actually, there was actually a tragic situation with a, with a young man that was injured very badly with some high, with electric wires. And then also, we were having a problem with some of these people moving buildings into neighborhoods, and they became a problem. And, and so the city wrote, and currently has a very, very strong ordinance that makes it difficult to move houses. So this is a narrow window, because Preservation North Carolina has received a grant loan to be able to move units and rehabilitate them within Lorae, so with, within that district, so they're just, they're not moving very far at all. So this was something that they asked, it seems like it would be a, you know, the million dollars is, seems certainly sufficient, we would recommend that you approve that.
Questions? Questions of, yes, sir?
You mentioned this, this was in Lorae?
Well, it actually says, "Within national register district within the same district."
Right, okay, so any historical district would get this?
That's the way it's written, but as, as Councilman Pierceall indicated, if we can find a situation similar, in a similar way, and we'll say in the Gaston Avenue area, and there are folks that want to move short distances, and they, we're sure they're gonna fix the unit up and bring it to compliance within 90 days, that all that needs to be done, then we would also do it in that neighborhood as well, because what you're trying to do is improve the neighborhood, that's what we're really trying to do, and also provide for reasonable safety and insurance purposes. So if they're really small little moves from one lot, just from one street to another, I think we could probably do this in some other neighborhoods as well.
And, and just a follow-up to that, sometimes when we change, when we do ordinances, then they're, they're there forever until somebody brings a idea to change it to the table. Is there any way that we can sunset this ordinance and put a time restriction on it? And once it sunsets, then if we haven't had any activities with it, or whatever, or we need to expand it, then we can do that. Because I, you know, we keep changing the ordinance, which is normal, but if we go ahead and put a, say, a three-year sunset, then that way, then they, they have the opportunity to use it within a time period, as opposed to, well, it's the ordinance, and 10 years later, they still hadn't moved the house. So just a thought.
Mayor Proten, that's an interesting question, because I've never seen or heard of a city ordinance with a sunset. The legislature does it with state law all the time, but I have some question as to whether a city is authorized to do that, as you know, we're only authorized to do what we can do by the General Assembly, and I've never heard of a city sunsetting an ordinance, so I need to research that and get back to you before either the manager or I can answer that question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they're, they're not gonna be moving these houses tomorrow.
No, they're not, I mean, I wouldn't think.
They, the, the last meeting we had with them, they seemed to indicate that they would be moving maybe as early as August or September, starting some of that. Now, that's their idea, but, but they're, yeah, they're, because I think the money that they've received to do this has a time clock on it, so they're, they indicated to us that they really were in a position to move forward with.
So could this wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, can we table it until next meeting?
I would imagine it wouldn't hurt, I wouldn't imagine it's not gonna hurt for one meeting, one city council meeting, allow the city attorney to research that.
Do we have to vote on tabling?
Yes.
I vote to table it until next meeting?
Let's vote, let's make the motion to continue to...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Take certain, whether it's August or second meeting, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
First, first meeting.
Yeah, continue it to the first meeting of August, that is my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you. So let's vote, please, all in favor? First meeting in August, okay. Item 13 is a Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee meeting report, Councilman Pierceall. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. The Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee met on Wednesday, July 8, and we had three items. Item number two and number three were information only in the essence of time, those are listed in your agendas, and I'll let you read over those, but on item number one, we were presented a pocket park project that was proposed at the time, and this would be at the corner of Second Avenue and Marietta Street. The Keep Gastonia Beautiful Art Committee is requesting approval to place a pocket park, including an art piece on city-owned property at the corner of Second Avenue and Marietta Street. KGB, Keep Gastonia Beautiful, would provide funding for the art piece through private donations, and the cost of the park improvements included in our art piece is estimated at $25,000 to $30,000. It is also requested that the city crews provide limited in-kind services related to the construction, as well as that the city provide a future maintenance needs for the park. A conceptual drawing was provided to the committee, however, the final design of the project would be subject to the overall funding availability, and if approved by council, KGB will proceed with submitting requests for quotes for the art piece portion of the project. And as you see in your agenda, the committee voted unanimously 3-0 to recommend approval for the Keep Gastonia Beautiful to place a pocket park at the corner of Second Avenue and Marietta Street, and the committee also requested that the staff review applicable lighting needs for the proposed park. And you'll see in your agenda packet, the same drawing that we were presented with, you'll see that the main entrance would be off of Second Avenue, and then there would be a secondary entrance off Marietta. It's just a nice little, right now, it's a vacant lot, it used to have a gas station on it, I believe, is that right, Pat, a gas station? And so it's just a way to improve this little corner, make it a little prettier, it'd be nice for that area, perhaps parents could use it while they're waiting to pick up their kids from the school, or the apartments on the other side of the street could use that, just a, just a nice little park. Pat Johnson, from Keep Gastonia Beautiful, is in the audience, I saw, and then we also heard from the Parks and Rec Department that said, because this is mainly hardscapes, and it would be other things like trees and bushes, maintenance would be very minimal, and they would be glad to take that on, and are also assisting with the design and implementation of that. So it would be my motion that the full council approve KGB continuing with this pocket park.
Second, one question, how much is this gonna cost the city?
The city?
Yeah.
It would be in-kind services, because the, the only, the only other thing going in there is, is like the maintenance and the hardscape, and Keep Gastonia Beautiful's getting donations for that.
So all donated money is coming in to build that park?
Right. And that's why, that's why, and correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, but that's why this is a proposed drawing right now, because depending on how many donations come in, it can be nicer, or maybe not as nice, you know, maybe it's stamped concrete and not brick pavers, I think that's what you're looking at now, because brick pavers will be too much, so we're looking at a stamped concrete that would look like paper, so, you know, it all just depends on how many, much donations.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Brendan, you probably remember, you too, John, this was David Jones', service station, bought a lot of gas in him, he's done a lot of work, he changes oil all the time. What I'd like to ask Ms. Johnson, that she would do, is ask David Jones', invite David Jones' wife and his family to whatever groundbreaking or dedication you have on this, because he was there all those years, and, and I think it's a great idea to do that, it's an eyesore now, it's gonna be a, something very pretty to look at as you come down Second Avenue. Thank you for doing that, and, but I hope you'll invite his family to...
It's a good idea.
...whatever the dedication is.
Comment on that, not to sound insulting, but Mr. McTeer and Ms. Greg are older than I am, so they remember that, but, and, and Mr. Bridgman.
In Carolina.
I don't remember the gas station, that predates me, so I obviously don't know anything about it, but it sounds like it has some historical significance in the community. Could we put some kind of plaque at the park that just kind of states what it was previously? Would, would that be something you'd be willing to incorporate? A stone would, yeah, be wonderful. Okay, thank you for the idea, Porter, that's, that's fantastic.
Good idea. No, that was just a recommendation, right?
Right, we don't, it doesn't have to be part of it for approval, but it would be nice.
But you're right on target, he was there for years and years. I assume the, the dirt's clean, or does, not buildings, doesn't matter that much.
Took all the tanks out, I stand...
The tanks are out.
There were about six of them, I think, weren't there any?
That was brought up, and we do have a clean bill of health.
As far as you know, of course, if you're not building a building, a structure, I guess you could even go over that, but, okay. All right.
We got a vote?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, there, there are also these, these plaques that have a photograph, and they're, they're laminated, I think when you go to parks or other parts of the country, you'll see, tells a history and a story, and sometimes it'll have a picture of what's, you know, what was there, there was an old service station, the folks that are involved with the dedication of the Highlands sign for their high school are interested in trying to develop a couple of these signs to try to visually show people what it was like in Highland, where the, where the old commercial, neighborhood commercial centers were, and also where some of the really nice homes were before the courthouse was built and all of that was wiped out. So sometimes if you go to some cities or some other parks and things, you'll actually see a photograph with a little description of what's there, and then it kind of tells some of the history. So we'll look at, at some of the various options and let the committee bring some things back and let the council look and see what options work best.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, let's see, we, you have a motion? And, a second, all in favor of the motion? It's unanimous, okay, go right ahead. There was one more?
As I said, Mayor, item two and three are information only, and since I know we have some other reports, that, I'll just conclude there, and you can read that information in your agendas.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's item 13. Item 14, Mr. Campbell, is a Transportation Committee meeting report, I think we have that copy here.
Yes, we do, Your Honor.
14.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, exhibit 14, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Item number one, okay, item number one, discussion of the Greenway repair at Fern Forest Drive, don't have some great pictures in your packet, but we were able to see a lot of pictures provided by our Engineering and Street Department, which indicate tremendous degradation of the pavement, and it's only gonna get worse. They need to take some swift and decisive action there to try and rehabilitate that area so it will be safe for travel. There were two alternatives that were presented to us, one would remove the existing wall and rebuild it with a similar structure. The bids were solicited with a low bid of $438,000, however, they believe there's going to be an escalation in the construction costs there to approximately $475,000, that's for alternative one. Alternative number two involves stabilizing the stream, the stream bank with riprap slope in lieu of the retaining wall, and relocating the Greenway Trail further away from the stream in an area where the present roadway is located, and the construction cost there were marginally less, approximately $250,000 to $300,000. The only issue that really came up was some input, and not very much, from the neighborhood regarding the possible street closure, with some folks concerned about losing connectivity, others liked the fact that there would be less cars on their street, and there was also a concern with regard to snow removal during the winter and a relative slope on that roadway. At the end of the day, what we elected to do was a 3-0 committee vote to recommend approval of alternative number two, and also direct our legal staff into the legal closure for the portion of Forest Drive, and I believe Melissa was working on that. Ash, do you have anything further for us on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I would make that in the form of a motion that we would accept the committee's recommendation on item number one, alternative number two.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any other questions and discussion?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Where would this money be budgeted from?
And I believe we have that, go ahead, I believe that's, that's going to be budgeted from the roadway construction?
The, the, the work on the, on the Greenway, and, and, yeah, the stormwater money because of the, of the failed storm drain, the part, a lot of this thing was the failed storm drain that, that is, that is buried underneath the street, and so that's all...
It's underwashing the roadway, and there's, what's happening is the pavement is collapsing because, really, there's a lot of the, the, the ground is being washed away, and there's nothing to hold the road up.
Right.
So the stormwater funds would be used, Gary, I was trying to think, we, we were, we were basically, and every time you have a failure, we actually have another failure up on radio, storm, storm drain, is you move those storm drain dollars toward it, I don't know if we're using any, are we using some recreation money?
Yes.
It's a, I think in this case, it's a combination of both.
Will the project, when will it be started?
Gary, do you want to come up and speak here?
I'm sorry.
Gary Sane, Assistant City Engineer, he's got all the specifics.
Thank you, Gary. On, on phase two, we haven't started on the design yet, no, we, we had already designed... We had already designed phase one and bid it out and was ready for construction, so we have the conceptual plan, so we could probably have the plans done in 30 days or so, 30 to 45 days, and go out to bid at that time.
So are we looking at possibly having that fixed, completed, for walkers, because, and people that get on the Greenway, by when, maybe, rough?
It would be spring of next year.
That'd be good. That would be perfect.
It'd be spring, early summer of next year.
Okay. That would, I mean, you know, because that's when most of the traffic's going to pick back up on the Greenway. Great. That would be super. Thank you.
You should note that, Councilman Campbell was right, you really can't see good pictures, but the road there is wide enough that they were able to put some of those concrete barriers-
Oh, yeah.
-and take up some of the actual road space. So the Greenway is still open.
Yeah, right.
And would allow traffic. And one other note is Rusty Boss was at our meeting, and as Councilman Campbell said, one of the only real concerns from neighbors was the remaining entrance has a steep slope in the snow removal, and Rusty Boss said that the city could put that street on the first round of streets that are clear.
Yeah, elevate the prioritization of when they would send the snow removal, sanding, salting equipment out to that street, if that became an issue. But the traffic numbers that we saw there were not that great, and there were not that, although it was certainly a legitimate concern, there were not that many folks that voiced that concern in the numbers that we saw with the survey.
Hey, I have a question.
Sure.
While Gary's up there. As you go down from Haygood Boulevard, right on Fern Forest Drive, to Forest Drive, it's about, what, 20 feet?
A car.
Bob Haygood or something at one time.
Yep.
I don't know the history of that.
I do.
But anyway, right down the street from, you know, that's what it was called?
It says it right there.
Right on down, going down Fern Forest Drive, a couple hundred feet, there's erosion almost up to Fern Forest Drive. I mean, it's only maybe, I saw some riprap you had put out there to install. And you have several of those, don't you, that the creek or something is working up toward Fern Forest Drive itself?
Yes, sir. They're, I mean, we've got, unfortunately, we've got them all over the city in a lot of locations like that, yeah. Yes, sir.
Just about six feet of the actual road pavement.
Yes, sir.
Where you're talking about, what we're talking about.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And the other side on Forest Drive, I know what you're talking about there, but not right on that part of Forest Drive.
Oh, you're talking about on Forest.
On Fern Forest Drive, yeah. Okay, that's, and thank you.
No, it's Fern Forest Drive.
I would share with you again, very quickly, that, because it is so priceless, is that Haygood Boulevard connects two streets, Fern Forest and Forest, and it came up through Sam Wilkins, the engineer in the 70s, that it had to have a name. And Dan Gunner was the mayor, and he looked out there, and there's Haygood, about half asleep, sitting there waiting for zoning to come up. So they named it Haygood Boulevard. So that was his, that's his claim to fame there. By the way, I wanted to tell you, Ed, that-
That's a true story. That is a true story.
This memorandum of, I have to be there for some reason, exhibit 14, two and three, it's so trivial, but it could eventually, I guess legally, somehow or other, of course, then I see Rusty sent, he went to Clemson, but there's one on each side, this forest is misspelled, F-O-R-R-E-S-T, and also in the recommendation, it's misspelled, F-O-R-R-E-S-T. There's only one R.
One R.
Like Fern Forest. Well, they're up there at the top of Greenway Repair, and also on the right. I just thought when it got to the legalities that you want to make sure and correct it. Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I will make a motion to approve item number one.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, please? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Is that it?
We're going to move to item number two.
Item number one.
It's done, yeah. Item number two.
Number two, discussion of the airport.
We looked at a lot of different things at the airport. We know that some of the buildings date back a little bit past, I guess, World War II. Revenue is a challenge there, and we have looked at a number of avenues to try and improve that. What can we do better? What are some of the concerns of the Lesseys that are occupying the property there? And we, a survey was developed, and it was sent out to the folks that are using the airport, and also some other folks that gave input. Mr. Leslie was very involved. He's since left the area, but was very involved in some of the early stages. And also some challenges for the maintenance and things in that area. And what the committee did, we did quite a bit of discussion. We're going to solicit information from other successful airports that the city could use as a model and best practices. And we said that because we see some of the other airports that are close to us, and theoretically would be competition for us, are eclipsing us in the numbers of aircraft that they have on the ground, the monies that the cities are making, and also how busy the airports are. Number two was to develop a master plan, which would include possible short, middle, and long-term plans and goals, to include anticipated costs, revenue projections, return on investments, and we're hoping for an update on this in 90 days. Lastly, to verify that the airport survey has been shared with the fixed base operator, or FBO. We also discussed the potential market demand for the airport, and what improvements would need to be made to keep us competitive in the market, because we're not there now. And to also evaluate and provide more information on self-service fueling at the airport, because that is one of the ways to derive our revenue. And again, frankly, that was one of the things that came up from the users, both that fly in and that lease hangers there, that once it's closed, they can't get any fuel. So we're looking at how much that's going to cost in the initial part, and then what would be the benefits over long term, since theoretically we're going to be selling fuel there as long as we have the airport. So the costs initially are going to go away year after year as we continue to use that apparatus to sell more fuel. Mr. Peoples has done a great job with some of the surveys, and Mike, do you have anything more that you'd like to add, or?
The FBO has the survey results.
Thank you.
They are working on some of the other issues.
Councilman McKeer was also at the meeting, and he brought up several points on the maintenance of the airport, specifically, and I wanted to get back with you on this, Mike, have we fixed the beacon light yet? Okay. We, I know that we had some delays with the particular, apparently there's not a lot of beacon light repair people out there, and we were waiting quite a while for him, but he has come out and fixed that beacon light, which is tremendously important to the safety. So with regard to item number two, these are all just pretty much progress and information at this point. Do we need a vote on it?
No.
And we do not need a vote. Are there any questions on any of the items that we went over here?
Yes, sir.
Well, the survey back here, with most of the questions, you know, from what I'm gathering, you know, if a new, if, you know, one of the questions is if new T-hanger or box hanger is similar in size, existing hangers were built, would you be willing to pay a monthly rate increase of $280 to $650 respectively? 91% of the people say no. And then it goes down to number five, where it says, do you need a larger hanger than what you're currently occupied? 82%, no. And six, the city is considering various methods to improve emergency response measures at the airport. Would you support a surcharge for security enhancements? 95%, no. I mean, is that basically, like, they don't want anything changed?
Well, that's a great question, Jim, and it's a great discussion point, because that is surveying the folks that are there now. And we don't have really a survey instrument in place where we can survey the potential business that would be increased with those, with any of those proposed improvements. Now, saying that, we've been maintaining a waiting list for what we have there now. So, you know, it's a portion of the puzzle, it's a portion of what we need to look at, but there's also some potential development out there that, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know how we can, you know, there's not a great way to survey who may come, or who might come if we did make those improvements, other than to look at some of the other airports that have done that, and they seem at this point, and that's what this, the further fact finding is going to prove, it seems that they are reaping the benefits of this, and the other airports, both in Shelby and Lincoln. But we're going to look at that more closely and bring that back to the city council for more information at a later time.
The other question I have, someone has said that gas prices, are gas prices, are air fuels higher than it is-
Yes.
-in Lincoln-
Yes.
-and Shelby?
Yes.
Why is that?
Well, it has to do, frankly, with our FBO, and that's one of the things that we're looking at. That's a great question. But that's another area where we're losing business, and we're also losing it because we don't have 24-hour pumping. If you're flying in or close, we can't help you. You know, where the other ones, you can swipe a card, put gas in your plane, fly off, and then, you know, that revenue, the portion that we get, would come back to the city. That is non-existent for us now.
So that'd help keep costs lower?
Well, no, it would create more revenue for the city.
Right, okay.
Are we open on Sundays? Are we open on Sundays at the airport? Okay. Limited hours or the same hours?
The, you know, I guess the idea of open, you know, the airports open, you know, pretty much all the time, and, but whether there's someone there.
Right. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, right. The hours of the fixed base operator.
Right.
And, Michael, I don't know if you got the, what the current ones, what's their current?
Hours, about.
Hours, yeah.
Certainly eight o'clock in the morning, and then they are open on a limited basis on Sunday.
Yeah, probably in the afternoon, I would guess. Which is a pretty popular time to fly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, well, my point in asking that was that, going back to the fueling thing, okay, if that's a pretty popular time, then, you know, we need to have somebody attendant out there that can sell them gas.
No question. So I think as we look forward to, and I don't want to speak out of turn here, Mike, you might want to comment on this, but as we look forward to a new FBO contract, I think that they are some of the points that your folks have brought up, that, you know, maybe we can integrate into when we look for new proposals to better serve our aviation customers without a tremendous onus on the city to do this. And I think that it's working smarter, but not harder. Mike, do you have any other thoughts on that? I think our contract is up on 2016?
Yes, sir. March 2016.
2016.
Current contract.
Okay. And that's, again, for information only.
Yeah.
Any other questions, folks? Okay.
Nope.
Moving on to item number three, it was an update on transit operations. The rate increase has gone into effect. I believe that we're counting more quarters. Is that correct? And, but other than that, there've been, I'm not aware of any formal complaints, are you, Mike? Okay. We're going ahead with the RFQ for the overall transit evaluation study on operations to evaluate what's been, what's been sent out to the interested firms. And we did request that Gaston County participate in this study, and I believe they declined. Is that right? Yeah. Now, we also were looking at, and we've had a previous meeting on this, the potential, if there is one, and we don't know that yet, because we're not done with the survey, to see if by modifying any of our bus routes, would we pick up ridership going to the hospital? In other words, to the best of our ability, are we servicing the customers, one of our predominant customer bases, are the hourly workers at the hospital, and is there a way to do better without incurring a lot of cost, but increasing the ridership? We put together a survey, and I personally dropped it off at the hospital, so they could survey the most likely workers that would use the public transportation and the ones that are already using it now, and we have not gotten that back yet. And lastly, the staff is developing a plan for advertising on our city buses. That's been something that's been going on for a while, see it in other cities, and, Mike, do you want to speak anymore on that? Where we are with that? I know that we are looking at wraps. I think it's a third-party vendor to do the wraps, and also to sell the advertising.
Yes, sir, Councilman. There was an agreement in the past for a third party to provide that. It hasn't really gone so well, so they were looking at taking that back in internally. But we've also made contact with someone that provides that service to other municipalities our size or larger, so they have a little bit better expertise. So they're evaluating our system now.
Thank you. And we don't need any action. This is, again, an information-only item?
Sir? Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
And, Mike, this just came up in the last two or three days, but I would request that, that we check to see how difficult it would be, if any, to add a bus stop at the farmer's market. They've requested it. They said there's, there's demand there, and they don't mind walking up to the road, to a long avenue, but they would like to have a bus stop there. And so I'd like for you to please check into that, if you would. And you know, you'll know the days they're open, Tuesday and Saturday, I think, or something like that.
Yes, sir.
It's our property.
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday.
Saturday.
All right. So, but they did request that, and been talking about it. So thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, sir.
Item four.
Okay, item, that item was number three, update on transit operations, was information only. Moving on to item number four, I'm not going to read all the paragraphs. Basically, that's a transportation planning initiative with NC DOT in its SPOT 4.0 candidate projection list development. The committee voted unanimously 3-0 to recommend the approval and endorsement of the highway and sidewalk slash bicycle projects as presented by the staff for consideration by NC DOT as part of the statewide transportation improvement SPOT 4.0 process. In addition, the committee recommended consolidation of the two phases of the proposed I-85 to be combined into one single project. There were a total of 16 projects have been evaluated by the staff for consideration in the next round of project ranking and funding prioritization. Staff recommended retaining seven projects with revisions to the scope and/or budget, adding one new project and removing seven projects. Any questions?
Questions? Okay.
And Todd, do you have any input from the MPO side on any comments on this?
Not necessarily from the MPO side. I mean, as far as the MPO, if that's what the city of Gastonian wishes, certainly we'll present it before the full body to see if they'll vote to combine the I-85, the two phases into one. As I stated in the meeting earlier, there seemed to be a lot of support from that, for that from the beginning. It was NC DOT staff that recommended breaking that in two, but if it's, if it's not the city's wishes and there's other support on the MPO, then certainly we can change that to one phase. Certainly, it's a request. At the end of the day, NC DOT may say, no, we're only going to give you one phase now, and we would be forced to live with that, but certainly it creates no problem or harm in requesting it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I would, if there's no further questions, I would make a motion to approve item number four, the transportation planning initiative with DOT.
Second, that.
Second motion, okay. Discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion, please? It is unanimous?
Thank you, folks. Okay, item, moving on to item number five, that was the Metroline Regional Freight Study Plan Funding and Participation Comment. Previously, I discussed this after coming back with some of the COG meetings, and I think it's a very strong program. It's integral to what we're trying to do to attract business in this area, and specifically with manufacturing. And this study is going to help to identify what the best practices and means and manners are to get the products that theoretically would be manufactured in this area to the final end user. They were looking for an additional amount of $2,000 as part of a partnership with this to move forward with that study. to move forward with that study as far as our amount, and the committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval of the $2,000 to pitch in for our part of the regional freight mobility study.
Questions?
Any questions?
All right.
I would make a motion that we would approve, item number five.
Second. Second motion. Any questions at all? All in favor of the motion, please? Thank you, sir.
Okay, lastly, we had item number six, and very, some very interesting discussion there, on the update on Franklin Boulevard with DOT, the five-lane concept. The staff advised that the committee of the discussions with the DOT, and to make this to five lanes. This could improve the quality of the pedestrian crossings through the center city, and also to improve the image of Gastonia. There was an update on the traffic signal change at Main Avenue and South Street, from signalized to a three-way stop. And this, and Todd, you may want to comment on this from your feedback from the downtown business owners, felt like this would be something very good. It would, it would be positive for the downtown businesses, and obviously, there's going to be a transition phase, which will go from the signalized, to flashing lights, and ultimately to the, to the three-way stop signs. Did you have anything on that?
I've heard it's positive from the merchants, they like it.
Great.
I will add that it was mentioned that it may remain a flashing light scenario that they may never go to just the stop signs, but other than that, nothing.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, sir.
Sure. It seems to me, those mast arms are really expensive, and it seems to me, with the volume of traffic, I'd like to have staff consider at some point if it's really that necessary to have that flashing light based upon the posted speed limit, you know, on Main, the fact that South terminates at Main. I've been in other small communities that have four-way stops that do just great with no, you know, signal, flashing lights. Couldn't those mast arms potentially be repurposed at another intersection and save the city a bunch of money?
I would think so.
They, that can be, and I know that was discussed, about the possibility of just having a three-way stop and moving that mast arm to a different location, and that's certainly possible, and what you can do is put a flasher up for a period of time, temporary, so people get used to it, because we're all such creatures of habit, and all of a sudden, we're thinking, you know, there's not a stop sign there, we have a, you know, and that would be a way to be able to just put a little safety in for the first year or so, and then afterwards just go, because there's not, the speed of the traffic is not such that, I mean, you know, a three-way would work there, too. Stop sign.
Thank you. Okay. The last item was just some discussion among the committee members regarding the announcement from DOT that they're going to be widening the Dallas-Cherryville Highway, and the timing of that, and there was just a number of discussion points on that. And that's, item number six is for information at this time. Does anybody have any questions, comments on item number six?
My understanding that I, that the, the announcement was basically turn lane, like we're doing, Tittman and Red Bud is three, three lanes, is that right? Is it, but are they different? I think they quoted Mike Olders saying that. It's a turn lane, in other words, if they go. I was, I read that.
That's what I heard.
I was still just curious as to how they got funding for this, because this is something that was discussed in the MPO, and it scored very low.
Right.
We gave Mayor Beam of Cherryville our support, even awarded it some points locally from the, our MPO, and it still scored very low, so it wasn't something that was going to be done immediately. And then Representative Hastings got involved, and all of a sudden, they've got funding for a road, so I thought we were taking the legislature out of these decisions, but it appears that is not so.
Well, I, I read also where this is a sudden drop of eye of the sky from Governor McGraw. It's his money, I mean, he is saying this is for roads, is what the article said.
Yes, Virginia, there is a Santa Claus.
I heard we were out of money for roads, but I guess not.
And did you want to make a comment on, before, I saw you nod your head with regard to the widening or something?
Oh, with regard to that-
Dallas-Cherryville?
That particular project. You know, what happens over the years is, is if there is a, and I guess in this case there were some, some rather, there were fatalities there, and so that might have created some points, but, but, you know, the, the process that the state uses to fund projects, there's so many different projects chasing so little money, that it is common that the state all of a sudden decides to fund this project or that project, and create maybe a new category, or a new source of funds is bound to match up against, and sometimes we've been beneficiaries of that in the past, not, not too much lately, but, you know, those, that's the process that goes on with lots of projects chasing very little money.
Well, it sort of brings to mind the Kendrick Road resurfacing, and I think you told me that, that they, it didn't need it, and I knew it didn't need it, and people out there said it didn't need it, but the state said, well, we had some money left over. So, that was their answer. So, it follows up what you're saying there.
Yeah, it's a, it's an answer better, it's a question better answered by the state.
Well, that's true.
We really don't get involved in that kind of funding there. Again, I do know that there have been fatalities back and forth, you know, on that road, and so I would assume that there's maybe some, some safety issues there, but, of course, the role of politics and support in projects, whether you're in eastern North Carolina, or in the mountains, or around here, and I remember years ago, they, they built loop roads for all the big cities, and all of a sudden, there was a new category for all the loop roads, you know, and so, you know, it's, it's an ever-changing process, and so you have to roll your sleeves up and get engaged, though, and fight for your own projects and the ones that are important for, for Gastonia, and for Gastonia County.
Right. Your Honor, that concludes the transportation report, thank you for your attention, folks.
Thank you, thank you, sir. It's a, it's a good long list, that's right. Item 15 is appointments to Alliance for Growth Image Campaign State Committee. Well, it says we're all going to present that, but that's Mark Kramer's letter, that's number 15-1, over there, in the, in 15-2, he's thanking us, and the Greater Gaston Development Corporation is thanking us, and I assume that, Ed, they're talking about us having putting someone on the committee.
That's correct, because remember when the council asked about, well, how will, how will Gastonia get input, and they said, well, you got two, two members.
Two members.
So, you know, this is our opportunity, and I think they're going to be meeting soon. I mean, I think that they want to kick that, that group off, so we want to make sure that we have two members on that committee who are active and participating.
Thank Mr. Vine, all of these one of them?
Yeah. Good idea.
When will they be meeting?
You know, I don't think they've had their first meeting, so I guess they'll get together and develop the schedule. I'm trying to remember if we actually have a date. My sense is that it was-
Senior staff.
It's, it's, end of July. They're going to try to convene it by the end of, end of July, so here, here we are.
Yeah.
I would make a motion for Councilman Todd Pierceall.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, Mr. Pierceall. Any discussion? All in favor?
That's one.
That's one.
What do you think about the manager? He may not want to do it, but he knows everything.
Well, he's, his background-
Or his designee, you could do a manager or his designee, correct?
Actually, it does say in his, in his letter that it would be elected by his senior staff. They are.
He thinks about what's going on in the city.
Yeah.
I know you have a lot of things you go to, and that's going to be another one, but-
Well, I'll be happy, if the council wants me to do that, I'll be happy to do that, and, and in terms of the designee, you know, I think that that is good to have, you know, for whether it's with Todd or myself, because, you know, we might be out of town for a particular meeting and be able to have a representative there at that meeting. I'm trying to get some clarification on that.
Second? Is there a second?
Second here, sir.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? I knew it was going to be like that. There we go. All right, Mr. Pierceall, Mr. Vine, thank you, folks. Item 16 is the citizen committee appointments, jumping back up again, it's number 16 needed for 2015 and 16, and that's Ward 5 is vacant, and Ward 6 is vacant, is the Community Development Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Mayor-
Yes, sir.
Myra Nichols retired, right?
That's correct.
She had a name for me, a person that was right across from Lowry, and I asked somebody the other day about this person, Pam Parks, who she was considering it, and said she was at the beach, and so I'll try to get in touch with her, said she'd be willing to do it, and she'd be an ideal person to serve on that, but maybe next meeting we'll have an answer for that.
Peanut.
Right on the clock. It was a, it was a junior, peanuts juniors, Pam's brother.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Pierce? He was well-known baseball, that's recently, I guess it was baseball, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That's why we call him peanut.
Coach.
Okay, well, we'll wait till she gets back to the beach, talk to her. All right, city attorney's report, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you'll indulge me for just a few minutes, I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the public expression policy. The policy, as you know, says there'll be no dialogue and no questions by the council, and the history of that is, there was a time when we had a group of citizens who were coming, and they wanted to use that opportunity to argue with council, they wanted to ask questions. People on both sides of the dais began to be determined to have the last word, they got angry, it grew undignified, and so that was the reason for the policy. It preserves decorum, and it preserves your time. It also avoids creating an expectation on the part of those who speak that they're going to get what they want, no matter what it is, because I would submit to you that sometimes the things that speakers are asking for may not be in the best interest of the city or the taxpayers. So that is the reason for the policy. Now, I'm charged with being a parliamentarian sometimes for you all, but when an elected official is speaking, I'm not going to interrupt you and say, you know, this is in violation of the public expression policy. The policy will work for you if you let it work for you, in my humble opinion. So, that's just a little bit of food for thought, and just wanted to remind, let, or let everyone know thoughts of Coleman Keter and his family, maybe the manager was going to cover this, but Coleman was the head of wastewater treatment for Gastonia in the 90s, and he left us to go to work for Shelby, and then he was recently running the Cabarrus Water Sewer Authority, and he passed away today, or yesterday, he was 57. So, really, really good guy. And Matt, thank you for making sure, I knew that. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. City manager's report, Mr. Vine.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I guess, just continuing with sad news, did, did hear today that Dr. Allen May, who has worked with us for a long time, and, and Tippett, his wife, Allen's daughter, passed away in Arkansas, and she was only in her 40s, and so that, that just, I think it happened last week, and so they're going to have a memorial service in Arkansas, I think in August, but that's all, you know, just incredibly sad when you lose a child, and so, our deepest sympathies to him. And also, a couple of things, we, we have finally gotten Uber that we read about in Gastonia, and that issue has, Uber.
I've been hearing that all day.
So, the, the issue is, some of the taxi, taxi cab operators here in Gastonia are saying, wait a second, they're unregulated. You know, what's going on here? We're regulated, we have to go through all this process, we have to get a license and everything, and these Uber people are just going online. Well, this is going on across the country. Currently, the state legislature is trying to sort through that, and they may develop new rules and regulations, because it is this battle between traditional taxicabs who, you know, you know, pay for their privileged, not privileged licenses anymore, but they, their permits, and they pay their people, now this is just all internet-based. And what will be coming to us also, too, but that'll be through the zoning process, is this Airbnb. There are people doing that, it certainly has happened in Raleigh and in other cities, that basically that if you have a couple rooms in your house because your children have gone, you just sign up to Airbnb, and your house becomes a little bed and breakfast, and, and your neighbor next door might have a little, make a little extra money by having folks stay there. Traditional ordinance, zoning ordinances say, no, you know, residential can only be residential, you really can't be having bed and breakfast, except under certain circumstances, parking and all this, so both of these things are coming to us, you know, we're not on the cutting edge of this, but we will be aware of it, and again, the taxi cab folks brought it up to us this week, and so the legislature is dealing with it, but those two issues will be coming back to city council.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
And just to be clear, I've just real recently been looking into some properties on Airbnb, and to be real clear, it's not just bed and breakfast, it could be several months, okay, and they are a, I actually, my experience was not that positive, to be honest with you. We elected not to get involved with that, but there's, it's more than just being a quaint B and B, and it's something that we really have to take a critical look at, that we want this in residential neighborhoods, we really do. Go ahead.
All right, that's all. City council reports, Mr. Craig.
Just a couple of things, first of all, I want to ask Matt, in our water treatment facility, how long is Mr. Cross committed to making sure that he is with us?
I think, given the age of Mr. Cross's daughter and her college plans, he indicated he's not going anywhere soon.
That's all I wanted to hear. That's great.
And I'm, I'm holding him to that promise, my understanding is that he's got a warranty on the work that was just done, and he's doing well.
That's great, that's great. I just, I just know how he, he probably loves that water treatment plant as much as he loves his daughter, okay? Well, he's there all the time. There's a couple of other things that I wanted to just bring up, and Ash, I, with you, this kind of leads in to what you said about the public expression, and I had a couple of questions I really wanted to, to ask when the policeman was up here, detective or whoever he was, but I didn't feel like that was the time, so I want to bring that, just ask a few questions as we're moving in this process with the police department. You know, I've always been confused, and somebody needs to help me understand this. What happens to the salary lag in a year's budget? Say, we budget, we have a budget of 100 and X amount of policemen, okay, but we don't fund those X amount of policemen at 12 months, right? Is that right? I mean, help me understand this.
Yeah, it's an excellent question, and we budget our, all of our employees at, at what they're currently, whatever, wherever they are in the range, and if we have vacancies, we tend to budget those at the bottom of the range. But during the year, in fact, every day it changes. Somebody's leaving, now, when someone leaves and they have 30 years with the city, they also will get a cash payout often, and so we were, are paying them for their accrued time, their vacation time and things like that, so that becomes a negative against us. But oftentimes, I mean, in fact, almost always, we never are really 100% full, whether it's the police department, fire department, or all, you know, because you're going to have vacancies. So, all of the money that is, that's not spent, falls automatically into fund balance. In fact, if you recall, we had a conversation- In fact, if you recall, we had a conversation this budget year, it was actually not this budget year, but the year before, we actually had a lot of money move in, and it was coming from that, that extra, we call it salary lag.
Right, right. That's what I've always heard.
And so that, so what we did is we actually tweaked our processes, so there's not as much salary lag. We anticipate some of that. So we carved it back, because remember when we gave the first increase of 2.5%, then later the 3.5%? It actually didn't jump up so high, and we said, well, one of the reasons is we noticed we were over-budgeting essentially, because, and so we weren't recognizing as much of that salary lag. So we've done a little more this year. My good buddy Melody's here too, who could speak. Now, see, she knows it really well.
Well, now, I don't need, I don't need a big lesson on this. All I want to bring to the table and put on the table is that when we approve a budget, now this is in my mind, okay, so Craig, when we approve a budget, we approve it by departments, okay? Well, if that department comes up at the end of the fiscal year with surplus in a particular line item, okay, then why does that not go as a carryover into the next budget year? Or why can that money not be allocated or reallocated in a current budget? If the, whether it's the police department, the fire department, utility department, whatever, whatever they have left over flows over into the general fund, right? And by state law, we have to keep 8% and 8% in the general fund. But we have imposed upon ourselves 12 to 15%, right?
Right.
Okay. So I guess I'm confused as to why different departments have excess money, but then it's really not excess money.
Yeah.
So I don't, I just wanna put that on the table. I think it's something that, as we move forward in some of these negotiations and some of these issues that we're working with, with, for public safety especially, that we just need to find out, if they come up with a surplus, what happens to that surplus that was budgeted for them?
Yeah. What we, and for instance, this coming year, one of the things actually we've been working on the last couple of weeks is being careful about what we think it is. And we think it's somewhere between a half a million, about a half million to $600,000, right? Okay. So that...
A year?
This year.
This year?
It's coming in this year. So those dollars are new dollar. I mean, they're going into our fund balance, which might grow the fund balance, and as you can tell, I mean, our fund balance is fine.
Right.
So we could use those dollars and plow them right back into police salaries, for instance. So that's, but the thing about it is, it was created one time. It has to be used every year. So you have to keep that in your head, but if the, if the source of it is vacancies, and it is the salary lag, and you believe that source is there all the time. In fact, if you look in your old files at the last time we gave you the thermometers, there's actually a $600,000 plug that we put in there. We say, yeah, we're doing that, we think, every year. So you could just go ahead and count on that and just, because there's no sense, you're really, you can spend it back into the system, and you're not gonna cause the system to wobble or anything. So yes, you got, so none of the money goes away. And in fact, our budget is actually constructed by fund. So really, should the fire department, in fact, the fire department tends to not have a lot of vacancies. If something happened where they were really tight, and it happened to be, say, the public works had some extra, extra money, we could move it back and forth between departments if there was a crisis. Same thing, you know, storm drains and things like that that break, so you can move within departments as long as you stay within the same fund. If you go beyond the fund, then we have to go back through a formal process.
Okay. Well, I just, like I said, I'm just putting that kinda on the table, and I've got one other thing I'd like to put on the table, is that we have council committees, okay, for parks and recreation, and we have the advisory committee, we have transportation, we have utility, we have all these subcommittees. We do not have a public safety committee. I would like to, for this council, to think about the benefits maybe of having a public safety committee, just like we have all the other committees, that hear the information and then bring recommendations to the full council. Just a thought, just a thought. And with that, I will have to say, our Springfield trip was wonderful. Oh, y'all missed it. Oh, you just missed it. You had to be there. Our mayor did a fantastic job in representing us, and everything he said was, was right, okay? And we're just, it was just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to make a wrong a right. And those people couldn't have been any more gracious. And, and when they come down here in 2016, we've got to show them some real southern hospitality. I mean, we really do. And I just wanna publicly thank our mayor for instigating the letter and then following up, and I appreciate the full council's support of funding it. It was just something that cannot be undone now. Can't be undone. That's my, end of my report.
No report.
Pierceall?
I would just like to reiterate what Councilwoman Craig said about the Springfield trip. It was truly just a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and to, to experience their gratitude. I mean, you knew what was kind of happening when you went up there, but to be a part of it and experience it and feel those emotions from those people was something I, I really don't have words to describe, but it was incredible, incredible experience. And, and the mayor did, did Gastonia proud. They, they loved the mayor and his southern accent, and hearing the mayor of Springfield and then our mayor, it was definitely, definitely a culture clash of accents, but they, they were so gracious and so welcoming, and we do look forward to, to having them here. The only other thing I would like to bring up and get some feedback from you guys, and it would need to be done tonight, is on August 4th, which is our next meeting, it falls on the same day again as the National Night Out.
They do that every year?
Every year.
I know.
And the, the community watch groups have requested that, that the council come to that again. The police department does a wonderful programming in conjunction with Target in their parking lot. The community comes out and meets the police. And every year, the council cannot attend, because we're sitting here in a meeting. It was asked of me by one of the watch presidents, can you not just have your meeting a little earlier so that you can get out in time to attend? And I said, well, it's, sounds easy enough, but I'm gonna have to ask. So I talked with Jim about that at the quarterly watch meeting, and we said, well, all we can do is bring it up. So what does it entail to move our meeting up?
To 5 o'clock?
Does anybody, is anybody in favor of moving our meeting up?
Yeah.
I think we've got enough, to give the notice, changing the meeting. The commissioners do it all the time.
Yeah. The only thing that ever trips you up is if, like a zoning notice that had been, but I, I don't think we have anything to...
Well, we could put our things first, if they, if there's zoning and they wanna come at 6:00. I mean, that can be...
5 o'clock, okay?
If it's at 5:00, it can be, we can get city business out of the way if the, if the zone, if there is a zoning that's coming up, and they don't wanna be here at 6:00, hypothetically, or whenever they get in.
So to meet early and end early?
Yeah.
Is that the idea?
That would be the idea.
They start at 6:00 and end at 9:00, right?
Chief, what are the times of that? I can't even remember. Is it 6:00 to 9:00? 6:00 to 9:00.
So we can, if we start at 5:00, we can get out?
If we're out by 7:00, 7:30, you know, that still gives us time to hop over to Target and...
Let's do that.
Let me ask you a question. Isn't it, Mike, isn't it... Isn't this gonna be at the county this year? At the park, county park? County police is doing it this year?
That's the county.
That's the county doing it?
The city is down here at the park.
Okay. So there'd be two of them?
Yeah. Each, each year, there's, there's two of them. And, yeah, and...
I remember last year, we were here.
Years and years ago, it used to be in every neighborhood, and I think they've gotten consolidated, and Target is funding it. Mike, you go.
So there're two of them?
Right. Gaston County does their own, and, and we do one for the city of Gastonia. I think right now, it looks like we have about 30 companies involved, is the last word I heard today, that's gonna be out in the Target parking lot. We're looking forward to it. I would think we're gonna have a large draw. We're excited. Thanks for bringing it up while on the televised meeting. Maybe we'll get some more folks listening and, and show up, because we'd like for everyone to come out and just take part in this great event that the city has.
That's great. August 4th.
So I guess what I'm hearing is 5:00 on August 4th to start our meeting.
Are you gonna make a motion?
I'll make the motion that...
Can I second it?
Well, I'm hearing earlier down here.
4:30. So here it is. See what time it is in this week? We don't know if we're being the last, what's gonna be on the agenda?
Certain citizens, though, it may be, I mean, I can adjust my schedule, but, you know, certain citizens might have a more difficult time getting to an earlier meeting. So we, we're still trying to do the work of the people, so...
All right, so fine.
Maybe if we could say 5:00, and yet we could also direct staff that their agenda should reflect, you know, it may be a two-hour meeting.
Right.
So if that's possible.
Well, that's fine. I'll make the motion that, that we have our August 4th meeting starting at 5:00 as opposed to 6:00.
Second.
You remind us, Jim.
We'll try to have a lot of consent agenda items.
There you go.
Try to put as much in the consent agenda as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna be there?
It's unanimous.
Do we have to vote on that?
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
It's unanimous. Thank you for allowing that. I'm, I'm sure the community watch groups will be happy, and we can attend.
And in light of that, do you wanna not get involved with food either? Just sort of, just get right to the...
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
As Junie's...
Yeah. And, and of course, that'd be at City Hall. Yeah.
Okay.
Give me a power bar.
Do you eat at the National Night Out?
Yeah.
There you go.
I'll make you get out quicker. Go ahead.
Great idea, Todd. Yesterday, I was at the least of these. They had a thing for school kids, not school kids, bring school supplies. So they're gonna be helping the kids that are, that are with foster families. I also was in Honduras at our last meeting, and I did see it, and I did hear what the police had to say. And one of the officers had said that we need to do a ride-along. So I took him up on it, and it was not this past Friday, but the Friday after that, I went out on a ride-along. And I went out with this gentleman named Josh LeFavors, LeFears? Is that my saying that right?
LeFever.
LeFever. You all know Josh. Josh is the one whose son contracted E. coli at the Cleveland County Fair and passed away. It affected this man greatly, and he just came on the force 30 days in. We all had a vote to give him special compensation to, to bring in his, the billings and all that, bring him under, because he had to be here 60 days, 90 days, something like that. But we made, we voted for that, and he did not forget that. With this ride-around, I mean, he was very thankful for not only the PD, but the council, the mayor, and everybody. I mean, he's a great officer, loves his job, and I found that with all the officers that I was out with. You know, I, I met up with a lot of them. I know there was a survey out there, and there's a lot of people saying there's a lot of animosity. I didn't see that with the officers. You know, there was a bust that they did with someone who was robbing these Section 8 housing, some, it was terrible. Anyway, I can't believe someone prays on the poor like that. But we were there, and I got to hear some of the officers that came. One of the guys, and this is one of the questions I have, you know, how many officers have we hired so far since our last meeting? That's one question I do have, Ed. Because this one officer said, you know, I thought I was up early. I, you know, I started my day on Friday at 4:30 in the morning. That's when I start working. And I was going until 2:00 at night. Well, this one officer said to me, he goes, I've been, I was at court at 1:00 in the afternoon, and my shift started at 5:00 and ends at 5:00. So that man was working 17 hours. I mean, that's, he said before, when they had enough staff, that they would not have to, they could knock off at 1:00, instead of having to do their whole shift until 5:00. But all the officers, you know, the main point thrust was, the guys that are being hired now are being paid, like you said it before, Ed, like the guys that have been here seven, eight, nine years. And it just doesn't seem to line up. I mean, the guys are in training, and they're valuable to the force themselves because of all they know and all they do. And it was just, you know, very enlightening. I met Sam Kane. Councilwoman Craig knows him as well as I do, and Sam's the one who broke both his arms in a car crash.
Oh, yeah.
I was with him when he was a little kid, taught him to play soccer and, with his scout troop with Sid Craig and all, and he has scars up and down his arms. And he goes, you know, Mr. Gallagher, I just wanna let you know that I'm not looking for a raise. I've been here two years. I'm fine. He goes, it's the guys that are here seven, eight years. And that was pretty pervasive throughout the evening when I was talking to most of the officers. And I was thankful that Travis did stand up there and say, you know, you need to go out and do a ride-along. And it opened my eyes a lot. And I just wanted to say, I was, I was really grateful, and I appreciate all the Gaston, the Gastonia Police Department does. I mean, you guys wear it proudly, and you stand above the rest. I mean, and it shows, just by going along with them. So if you have a chance to do that, you know, I just wanna encourage you. And that is it, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ducker.
And just have one thing, I don't know if, Mayor, you were gonna mention it, but we are in voluntary water restrictions right now. This is not a paid announcement by Auto Bell, but it would be good probably to, you know, take your car to a car wash versus doing it in your driveway. Also, that you should be watering more often than twice a week if you're watering lawns, but just be kinda judicious. Hopefully, we'll get through this. Everybody do a rain dance as soon as possible, and hopefully we'll get some rain. But, yeah, just be conservative, and that's all I got.
Campbell? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. Obviously, a lot of time has passed since we didn't have, sorry, a lot of time has passed since we've had our, had our last meeting, and obviously, we had the tragedy in Charleston. I was fortunate to be able to attend a church service at Mount Zion Restoration Church. They, it was multi-denominational. They had a number of pastors that just spoke for a few minutes. Chief, a couple of your officers were there. Great job. Very empathetic evening, a lot of meaning. Secondly, Ed, I have a question for you. How are we doing our computer parts and whole computer recycling? How do we do that? Are we paying somebody to take that away?
I know that we separate it, and I believe that we have a contract with, with an entity to, to take that. But Melody, do you remember? You wanna come up and if...
We don't need to, again, don't need to go into tremendous detail. I will tell you that Stanley County just got a Cog Award. They, apparently, the price of those precious metals in the computers are skyrocketing. And their latest initiative, they're actually getting paid instead of having someone, you know, pay to remove the stuff. So I, I think I have a little bit more information on that. I'd like to share it with the appropriate party. With Stanley County, it was, basically, that's a revenue-neutral initiative that they're running, and it was very well-received. It seems to be working pretty well. Obviously, I, I think it's dependent on the price of those materials, but it looks like they're gonna stay up there, and something I hope that maybe we can look at. Lastly, can we take a look at Hudson? We have a lot of trash out there, a lot of, on the sides of the road, a lot of overgrowth. We actually have some kudzu and other vegetation that are actually growing to the We actually have some kudzu and other vegetation that are actually growing to the side of the road over the guardrail. There's been some couches out there for several weeks on the fronts of properties. Sneakers, there was a, some folding chairs laying on the side of the road. That could use a little bit of a sprucing up. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. It's, I think the lights will go off in about 10 minutes, so we need to get Dr. Curl and jump up and down again. The, it's been, just very quickly, let me just say, it's, it's been a very interesting time since our last meeting, especially since we missed one. Thank you for the kind words, first of all, on Springfield to you all, and thank you for being there. And of course, Chuck just really did it. Chuck Dillinger did a superb job. Rachel did it. Everyone did it, went. And it, it was an eye-opener. I've got some things here, but I'll, I'm going to save it till the next meeting. Mr. Moon and I have talked about it. It'll surprise you. It did meet what we'll keep at City Hall after we're gone. The, that was everything that you said. It was, it was absolutely just almost remarkable. And they did treat us extremely well. Didn't make that last plane, but we came in late, and I got to sleep a little bit and then left for Gota. And I could write two books on that one in seven or eight days. They eat a lot, they drink a lot of beer, they make a lot of beer. And we all know that. But they, they eat, their plates are platters, and they're all little. But they run and they walk and they exercise. But it's, that's one. Number two, you don't, if we're all waiting for our food, you better go ahead and eat yours when it gets there, or they'll tell you to because it'll get cold. So you have to start eating. And then you take your opposite hand from how you eat and the one that you, you're writing with. And you put it in the other hand, and you take the knife, after you cut the meat, the knife, you then put the food up on the fork, and then you eat it. And they watched us, we didn't quite do that then, but we tried, and Dr. Bob Blanton, that was the three that was there. But I just, bottom line, it is, was, it was fantastic. I had to have an interpreter, and she happened to be Hannah Anderson from across the street from where I live, and all the way over there. She was with the students from Gastonia, Gaston County. There is a Gastonia street in Germany, and they will be coming here later on, on the Greenway. That was, that was a very, very interesting meeting. I mean, time, interesting week. For, lastly, well, I also, you mentioned Mount Zion, the one up on Crescent Lane. I went there, that's my, that's where I went to school, and school's gone, but the church is there. And then Friday, I think this is maybe what, I have this, the Brother Hinton's Church down here at Tabernacle Baptist, they had hundreds of people to come and see the Japanese choir. There were, well, 50 of them, I think there was. But the guys originally from Kings Mountain that does it, that did it, that put it all together. And that was very interesting, and they were, it was just, I'm glad that I could be there to welcome them. It was, I think that every one of those in the choir had wanted to shake my hand, or mayor's hand. And maybe that's what happened there with the, that they were very, and, you know, do their bow, and they did a wonderful job. We have here from Bill Starr, if you'll remember, United States Marine Corps Reserve Commander's Award. It's, it's plaques, I mean, we'll, we'll make it one. It's for Gastonia City Hall, for the outstanding support of the 2014 Gaston County Marine Toys for Tots program. It was excellent. It says, "Our generous contributions have enabled them to bring the joy of Christmas and send a message of hope." We'll want to, I'll give this to Ed and Jenny, and we'll want to certainly do this again. It's, it was very successful, and a lot of the departments got it really involved with that. With that, I think that we're just about ready to go, and thank everyone for being here. And I, I hope that these things are going to work out. It can't always be rosy-rosy, but most time it is. And I think that we have a good council, and I wish everyone the best. Thank you very much. See you at 5:00 for the next meeting.
Not 4:30.
All right. Take you.
Right.